We're recording.
Okay, uh, this is a work session tonight, Monday October 28th, 2019, it is 4:30 PM. We're in the Thomas J. Smith Council Chambers. Uh, this is a work session, so if you're not on the agenda, uh, we won't be hearing from you tonight, um, uh, but we are going to, uh, move ahead. I see some familiar faces that are here to talk about parking passes, so we're gonna go to discussion items first, so you guys don't have to sit around for all the ugly stuff. And, uh, I would love to say, "I came up with that idea all by myself," but, but I didn't, so anyways. Um, James?
So, I guess, as we've got, gone through several different, uh, issues that have come up around parking, one of the things that we, uh, realized is that with the parking passes, uh, there's, there are several that, uh, have been out there. I mean, the mayor's got, has had one, we've had some of our departments who've had some...
No, let's, let's, they, they wouldn't do any more.
Yeah, we tried to change that up. You're at order, Jim, let's stay focused.
The point is, is that we, this has been a lar, a larger issue. There have been several places that have had parking passes, uh, but there's nowhere where we see that there's an, a formal authorization provided for it. So absent a formal authorization, there isn't a, a justification to have a parking pass. Um, given that, uh, there have been a lot of issues surrounding availability of parking, specifically through the Jefferson Street corridor, uh, we, at the staff level, are pretty, pretty hesitant to be, to be recommending that we authorize the use of parking passes in that area, where at the same time that we're doing everything we can to limit, uh, having parking committed on that corridor for long periods of time for other purposes. However, that is something that the council has the ability, if you have a desire, to have a formal policy in place that does it. If you do that, though, one of the things that I think Eric would, has pointed out, is how do we move through, uh, how that works? Is there, are there certain hours, certain locations, a fixed number, or whatever the case may be? Now, the senior center has some serious concerns about how they, uh, access the structure and have adequate parking for the people who use the senior center. Uh, I assume that part of this is to make sure that we have a chance for the senior center, uh, whether it's the board, or members who just, participants who use the facility, uh, bring forward what their concerns are with the potential for loss of those parking passes. So, and with that, I think maybe the, if, if someone from the board wanted to do that, or how you wanted to organize doing that.
Well, do, do we know how many parking passes they have?
No, uh, we, I, no, there was, at one point, there was some that were to, were made that were standard from the city, uh, but the ones that they have now have been made internally, and I think that you've just sort of had them, that you've been able to give out, and given, on a given day, you'll, it, it can vary from one day to the next how many are used. So, that's, we don't have control over that. That's something that they have had control over.
Okay. Let's, yeah, let's have Representative Cum, I already spoke with, uh, Mr. Smith. Uh, can I get somebody to come from the seniors, too?
I'm Marilyn Light, and I live at 1262 Messiah Drive.
You might want to pull that down just a little.
Do you hear me?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Uh, and, uh, I'm currently the treasurer at the senior center. Uh, in order for the seniors to go to activities, they need, every, every senior that goes to an activity needs a parking pass so they can park there longer, because our activities last longer than two or three hours.
Seniors like to party?
Well, we don't have much time, you know? We gotta make the most of it, but, uh, it, it's a real hardship. They played, uh, bridge today, and I think that's like 12 to 4. They have to get out and ch, move their cars if they can find a spot.
How many people were playing bridge today?
Forty.
Around twenty, or twenty-four sometimes.
Did that include the pinochle players?
Uh, pinochle players, lots of times, most of the time, there's, is around ten.
They play at the same time.
And they're at the same time as bridge, from, uh, noon till four o'clock.
I wonder how many vehicles that is?
It will depend. Sometimes they ride together, sometimes not, and any certain day, there's gonna be a different number of passes that will be needed. Uh, every senior who uses that senior center needs a pass, so that they can...
Where are they parked?
Wherever there's a spot.
Would, do you think, um, with us moving to the free lots, and, and that should take place, I think, I heard, like mid-November, but we're not sure what the free lot behind you, do you think that might eliminate some needs, so we could have some compromise?
Probably not a lot, maybe a little, a little, uh, but you know, it is still an uphill climb.
Sure.
To get there, and the sidewalk is bad.
Yeah, is there a, is there a time limit on the handicap parking stalls there? There's three of them, right?
How does that...
Our president just got a ticket the other day.
Yeah, that's why I'm asking, I'm not sure how long it's, it's same thing, okay.
So, yeah, it would be two hours for the ones that are on Jefferson, and then the ones on Fifth would be three.
Three, okay.
What's the days of your events again? You have like three days that you guys have events every week?
Well, on Mondays, they play cards, pinochle and bridge. Uh, on Tuesdays, they have bingo, but now that's open to the public, not all of those people are going to have a pass. Uh, Wednesday is Golden Oldies. We had 26 there last week.
Is it, uh, is it safe to say that there's probably something going on every day of the week in the senior center, whether it's...
Well, it, it could, it could be.
Okay.
Usually Fridays, usually, there isn't anything, except maybe later in the, in the day, when you play cards.
So, I went down, um, I, I, I went down two days, the last week and the week before, um, back-to-back, and, and one day, there was 14 cars parked out there that had some kind of makeshift parking sticker, and the other day, there was 11. Um, and I guess, I'm, I'm personally okay with you guys having them. I'd like to see them issued by City Hall, uh, that way they can at least be regulated to some degree, but my biggest concern is, what effect does that have on the businesses that are, that are right next to the senior center? So, Nature's Corner, or Bent River Brewing, if, if you guys have an event that happens at 10:00 AM, and it doesn't...
Well, most of those businesses established themselves after we were there, so they knew we were there.
Correct, but I still have to take them into consideration when, when coming up, trying to come up with some type of policy. So I guess, my biggest concern is if you have an event at 10:00 AM, and you don't get done until 4:00, and you've got 12 or 14 cars parked, uh, right next to the senior center, well, that's essentially taking up all of the available parking for those particular establishments. Um, I don't know, what are you guys' thoughts?
On the other hand, if, if, if we can't use the senior center, it's pretty useless.
If, uh, if we were to do something, right now, you have to move your vehicle, I think, every, every two hours, what if, what if you only had to move it every four hours? Would that make it a lot easier for most of your events? Do most of your events fall within four-hour mark, period?
Depends, depends.
Okay.
Like, if you're gonna play cards for four hours, though, you get there a little early, you might not get out of there right away, so it might run over a little.
But if, if we had a permit where, where you guys could get those permits and pass them out to people, um, and that would basically exclude you from the two-hour requirement, but allow you to park for a four-hour period, uh, is that something that you think would, would suffice? That way, we can ensure that we don't have a vehicle parked there the entire day, but, but then still, you're not required to go out and move it every two hours?
Well, let's look at, okay.
Marilyn?
Go ahead.
Mayor, I actually work at Milestones, I have for five years, and only once in all my time, when I came down to that 500 block of Jefferson, did I have trouble finding parking, so I would hate to get rid of the passes that I think you all so dearly need and deserve, particularly those of you that are handicapped, and I would hate to take that away until we have another arrangement made for the seniors in this community. But I'm wondering, as Matt is expressing, if some type of compromise can't be reached, because there are businesses that do maybe start getting busy at 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock and do need those spots.
I think we're usually out of there by 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock, though, aren't we?
Yeah.
Our activities are more morning and early afternoon.
That's what I was thinking.
So, hmm, if mo, most of your activities are four hours or less, give or take, no?
Well, Golden Oldies is 9:30 to 2:30.
We're, we're there, I'm down near 8:30.
Nine to three.
But they're a smaller group, correct?
Twenty-six there last week.
See, and that, that's my concern, is...
But they're not all gonna use the passes.
No, they, some, well, some will ride with others, um...
But even if you cut that number in half, you've, you've got 14, 15 spots, give or take.
I don't mind the passes, I do like the idea of the city issuing it, um, I'd like to limit that, so there's not so many floating around, um, I, I think that's important that we do that, we've gotta find a way to meet in the middle, but, um, as was stated to me, if I keep living, I'm gonna be one. Heck, I'm 50, my kid says I'm one already, so, uh, and I know how it is, when you have, uh, issues with your body, as we get older, things start breaking down, and, and, uh, I don't want it to get to the point to where, um, that people are saying, "Well, I'm gonna stay in, because it's just gonna be too much trouble to get out and see my friends." Um, I, I support anybody with gray hair, this is how I feel, man.
But, but...
I don't think you're alone in that.
Right, right.
I guess you have to kinda have hair to have gray hair.
That's true. That really hurts, that really hurts. That was out of order, but, uh, but, one, I, I think that back parking lot, we have to utilize that a little bit more, because I know we also do have some, some tough and strong seniors as well, but, um, of all these years that the senior citizen has been, senior citizen center's been there, and for the, my time on the council, nobody's ever come to me and said, "Man, we've got a problem with those seniors taking our spots," and, and because of that, I'm more apt to, to, uh, giving a little bit more than, than taking.
Well, let me ask you the question, are we, are we in a hurry to do this? I mean, this, this, this is a, this has existed for a while, and I appreciate city staff's desire to get this thing reeled under control, but we have a couple of things happening. We have free parking's gonna take place sometime in November. There have been some discussions about maybe a better location of facility for you, but that's too early to talk about. So if we're, if we're not in a hurry, why don't we let it exist as it's been existing? Now, there is a problem, it's a great problem, is Burlington, downtown Burlington's had a lot of resurgence, and finally, after decades of neglect, the 500 block has some good things going on there, and we don't wanna penalize that, I agree with you, Matt. You got a new restaurant's gonna be opening up soon on that side, uh, a bar restaurant, but they're supposed to be open for lunch, so we need to, we need to get along, but I, if we're not in a hurry, let's exist for a little bit and work on some other options, and see where it's coming from. I know that seems like it's putting it off, but I don't wanna make changes to it, uh, to change it again.
Well, I think, I think it would make sense to, at a minimum, at least establish...
How many?
The, how many, and have them issued by City Hall.
That I, that's what I'm saying, I like your idea, and I like that combined.
Leave everything else alone, but that way, that way we can ensure that we don't have just any old business owner making their own pass and putting it in their window, now that people are especially aware that they exist. Um, and I, a lot of what I saw down there the other day, wouldn't be very difficult to replicate, just to put in your vehicle, um, so I think it would make sense, whether we, we take some kind of vinyl placard and issue them, and then you guys use them accordingly, um, but do, do that that way, so. And then at least also, we have the policy on the books, so that if there is an issue, we have something that we can refer to, um, from a, from a legal standpoint, right, Jim?
Yeah, and then you would, Eric, what were the, some of the concerns about even parameters, if you try to have a, an established policy, what are, what are the things that you'd come up with in terms of what?
Just what the criteria are, and is this just for the senior center, could someone else apply? Um, uh, number of passes, location allowed, timeframe, is there a cost?
Yeah, 'cause as we talk about location, is it just on two blocks?
Jefferson and Fifth, or...
No, I see, I see what you're saying.
So, that's, or has that now become a pass that's usable anywhere in downtown? Or what are the limits, and how do you establish it?
I, I would, I would rather see it, if, if we say, "Okay, we're gonna give," and I'm just gonna use round numbers, "But we're gonna give 10 passes, those passes are housed at the senior center," and then they're passed out at the senior center, um, and, and perhaps it's not necessarily an able-bodied, or, or, you know, somebody who needs to park a little bit closer, 'cause they have more difficulty, perhaps they're not the one taking it out and putting it in their car, 'cause I understand what you're gonna say, is we don't want them taking it out and having to go back out. Uh, there's a, there's a lot of folks that are sitting here tonight that took stairs, so I'd like to think that perhaps somebody could take that out and put it in their vehicle for them, um, uh, but I think that might make the most sense, that way we don't have to worry about them being used throughout the entire downtown area. Uh, most people are probably gonna try to park as close to possible as the senior center, but without saying, um...
Yeah, with that parking lot down on the end, I mean, what's the difference of walking from the parking lot to walking from a block west?
They don't kinda be self-policed, but at least it'll be formalized.
I don't see the seniors parking more than two hours anyplace else in town, though. So, I think they would only be using it for the senior center.
As far as the cost goes, I don't, I don't, I mean, we don't need to make money on this, I, it's a, it's a, kind of a free deal, I mean, I don't see the need to start charging parking passes, or, if we did, we'd make what, maybe 75 bucks?
If we, here's the thing, on those passes, though, uh, I think they, they should be designated for a specific area, therefore, the senior citizen center, so that would be my only thing, is that, um...
But that would essentially be done, though, if they were housed and issued out of the senior center.
You'd probably wanna have the block faces at the five and, the four and 500 blocks of Jefferson, and, uh, whatever the two and 300 blocks, or two and 100 blocks of North Fifth?
And that could even, that, that could be identified even on the tag itself, too, as well, but...
Yeah, to my knowledge, there has not been any abuse, and I don't foresee there being any, but if, we just reel it in a little bit tighter and have more control.
One of the things, John, you were mentioning, uh, for, uh, thinking through different alternatives.
That's correct, I, what I, well, what I'd like to see us do, is we have the, the, the old diner spot at the depot, um, I, Nick was gonna take a look, see what it would, it'd take to finish that off, and then you would have that space, and you, we could also work with G R, or B R E, which is Burlington River Front Entertainments, for when you had dances and stuff, you could use that great room, which is a beautiful room. It's already heated, 'cause the city's paying for the heat for the, for the great space area, uh, so your heat portion would probably be a lot less than what you're paying now, which I believe is, yeah, and it, a little bigger kitchen, uh, which I, I think your heat bill's being subsidized now, is that correct, from time to time?
Well, by an anonymous source, which, I don't, yeah, I don't know how long...
Score footage-wise, that building's a lot less, isn't it?
Well, I think the, the diner spa, spot is a lot less, but if you add the great room in there, we only have two trains coming in, uh, two trains twice a day, one at, one in midday, one in the afternoon, uh, and we're heating the building anyway, so you would have some heat there in that great room that would, so if you had an out, outdoor activity, we even have, if I remember right, I was talking to, uh, Mike, there might be some partitions that you could put up to, to wall it off. Now, the only time that that would be a, a situation that would change is when they had an event like a wedding or dinner were there, but they could coordinate with, that with you. I don't know if that's possible, but the parking there is not a problem, it's all flat. Uh, to me, that makes some sense, to at least look at it together and see if, see if we can come up with something that, or, uh, a facility like that, so...
But you bring up parking at the depot, keep in mind, we did just sign an agreement with Amtrak, didn't we, that required a certain number of spots to be set aside for them, so we wouldn't wanna get into a violation with that.
You're not, I don't, I don't think you're gonna have an issue with that part.
No, you got, you got...
But the, I guess part of it, though, is, I mean, the group, or some of the group got to go with Nick down and take a look at that facility.
The board members, yes.
I don't even know if you, if you even had a chance to discuss whether there was an interest in seeing that as a viable option.
Uh, yeah, we, we were interested in discussing it further, and, yeah.
So, if that's the case, what I would say is, we don't make any changes, we, we, let's get together, let's meet, uh, and figure out if we can, you know, financially do it, and make it feasible for you, feasible for us, and see if it works, and if that's the case, you know, pretty well takes care of that problem.
If that's something that...
If that's something you guys would like to entertain, so...
Still, I still think we should follow through and, and put the, put the standardized placard policy in place.
I guess I have a, I have a quick, quick question, um, I guess, when is the next time you will be meeting, your board will be meeting?
Next Friday.
Friday.
At one.
So, maybe as a compromise for everyone involved, we could put you on the next work session for discussion, after you guys have an opportunity to discuss the depot and other things, we've kind of bounced back and forth with each other, and, so basically, not do anything whatsoever, until this next, this upcoming work session.
Either that, or what we could do is appoint a couple of council members to meet with them and their board after they meet, same thing, but maybe not at the work session, hammer out those details earlier, and then present.
I think what they discussed at their last meeting is, they liked what they saw, and then Nick left it, he was gonna put some numbers together for them. That was my recollection.
I'm Troy Clooney, I'm president of the Golden Oldies, we're down on Wednesday, and like I said, we're usually there from around 9:00, or a little before, until about almost 2:30, sometimes 3:00. We're supposed to be out of there by 3:00, but, uh, what I'm, if talking about, you guys deciding how many, uh, passes to give out, how do you decide who gets them? Who, who is, you know...
That wouldn't be, that wouldn't be up to us, that would be...
You guys would decide.
Yeah, that would be for the, for the board.
We'd give you a sack, and you guys figure out who you want to have.
Because how would we know who needs them the most?
Yeah.
People down there would know who really has issues, and they may have to change, somebody has surgery or something like that, and somebody's, you know, recovering, so they, they may shift, as far as that goes. But, but I do wanna back up a little bit, if you guys are serious, um, and we can come to, uh, an agreement with the, uh, the depot, I think that's something that could swing.
Oh, that'd be definite.
I really think that would work, I think it would be more beneficial for the group, less stress, and it really would, in the long-term, short-term and long-term, uh, less stress for the group, and you guys still have the building, 'cause don't think for, for any minute that, that the council is trying to squeeze the, the seniors, uh, out of their building, give them no place to go, that's not the intent whatsoever, um, we're all getting older, we've got the Silver Tsunami here, if we keep living, we're all gonna get there, and, uh, I wanna shake my booty and maybe sing with the, uh, what are they, the Silver Singers? I don't have any hair anymore, so I would just be the bald, shiny singer, but, um, I, I get it, I get it, and we get it, so don't, yeah, don't think that that's what we're trying to do, somebody said, "Well, you're trying to run the seniors out," no, that's not the case at all, it's not the case at all, we're just trying to find a, a resolve that works for the city, and for the seniors as well, so that we kinda find some happy-happy, or at least, uh...
Yeah, 'cause I, I agree, 'cause I gotta think that, that, that the heat, heating and cooling of the Greer's Diner would be significantly less than what you're paying now, so, and then plus, you, if it's all flat and you have parking, that would, that would be my dream scenario, if, if it works, but we need to get to, and hang, hang, get together and hammer it out, and I'm closer to being in that group than you are, so I'll join the group first.
Could we have, could we have Nick come forward and just kinda talk about some of the things that he's talked about, potentially what you could do down at the depot, uh, to make that feasible?
I like it that the bus comes there, and they've got that new program in Burlington, where $25 a month, the bus will come right to your door, take you wherever you want. I think that's a wonderful program, seniors, and that's so wonderful, I'm gonna say it again.
Thanks for bringing that up.
$25 a month, that bus will come to your door and take you wherever you wanna go, heck of a deal.
To the corner it will.
To the corner.
Unless you are, unless you have a, unless you have a wheelchair, and then we will, we'll provide access right to your door. Um, forgive me, I, I was gone, uh, for the last eight days.
Why worry?
Congratulations, buddy.
Oh, yeah.
This thing.
Oh, my God!
I did take a look at some of the stuff down at the depot and what we could do, um, after speaking with my property maintenance manager, um, and then a local contractor, I think it's wise to fill in the area, if you're familiar with the diner, there's kind of a step down to the kitchen, uh, keep some of the existing penetrations to have like a, you know, sink or sewer line access down, um, but then there's a step up in the kitchen out, so if you were to fill that all with concrete, and then put kind of an epoxy, you could kinda match the floor, but create a level surface throughout the whole facility. Uh, the, the biggest question, I think, is the countertop, uh, where the existing countertop, uh, was, and how to do that, I, there's loads of different options, you could spend, you know, very little money and have something there, or you could Taj Mahal it, so I think that's kind of the biggest floating number on it.
Do we, do we have to have a countertop? Can't we just have it being open?
Um, it would be kind of awkward if you didn't, because you'd have a, you have a ridge of terrazzo, uh, through there, so you'd need something, um, otherwise, that would be a trip hazard of itself.
Okay.
Uh, but then, potentially outfit with, you know, a sink, refrigerator, um, a range, a range, or stove, um, and then like a microwave.
You even talked about potentially getting some new tables and chairs?
At the depot? Yeah, that wouldn't be hard to do.
Really lightweight ones, that they could reposition really easily, not real heavy.
They make some really good, and I know it sounds, they make some really good plastic tables and chairs now, that are actually comfortable to sit in, so...
No doubt.
Um, there are, there are definitely some options, so, I'm still working on those numbers, uh, hopefully I'll get some, get them sometime this week, but just trying to play catch-up today.
Well, I think, and the biggest question is gonna be ultimately for them, and, I mean, right now, they've got a large, open space, they can leave tables out, they can leave chairs set up, and they don't, it doesn't require them to, to set those up or change those all the time, or if we move them into a space like that, anything that they have, they're gonna be constantly setting those up and taking those down.
Not necessarily.
No, I don't think so.
I, I think that you could leave things in the open space, um, and I don't, people may sit at them in the off-hours, I don't think you can completely close that off, but people are fairly respectful down at the depot, um, you know, we have pretty decent pieces of artwork that are hung up on the wall, we have tables and chairs around the facility, and they stay there pretty unharmed, and we, for security, we do have cameras in the building, so if something were to happen, you know, we could go look back at footage, but, um, overall, I, I think that they could stay there.
Right, and right now, the, there are some dividers that are down there, that are portable dividers that you could put out, now, those are more of a physical block of view, that, that you may use at times.
Yeah, they're eight foot tall.
I, I think there may be the potential, even if you were to say, "We wanna have an area that we have separated, where we have chairs, chairs and tables set up on a regular basis, where you put some type of a divider, more just a...
A ribbon, or something.
Just a, what, the poles and a...
Like in an airport, or something.
Yeah. Not that I can't say it.
I'm going, yeah, I, I think it would work, if we get together on it.
Yeah, I'd like to see what those numbers look like, 'cause obviously, right now, it's not something that's in the CIP.
Well, I think that it's something, though, that it's, you're, you're thinking in the 30, 40,000?
I think 25 to 30 could probably get it done fairly easily.
And, and that's something I think that can be accommodated, and it makes sure that we use the space that we've already rehabbed, and, and gets it, it used well, uh, that, from our perspective, if it works for the groups to be there, is a, is a good expenditure to, uh, try to have a, a good win-win for...
Agreed. This is, uh, and, and, let me say it again, this isn't putting, this isn't putting you guys in the corner, I think this would work out a, a whole lot better than what your situation is now, and what it has been. Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make one comment or two on Bob Sogard, I carry the cards for the bridge down there, we have five players, or five, uh, tables, or six.
What's your name, sir?
Bob Sogard. Um, I'm speaking also for a 95-year-old lady who had to get out and move her car today, and it, it was some trip, she's a, she would be here, but she can't, doesn't feel she can drive after dark, so, in other words, we have, uh, and I have a selfish reason, I got a $10 ticket the other day, the, but I have pulmonary fibrosis, and I'm 95, and I don't feel confident walking from the parking lot to the senior center, regardless of what you got planned in the longer range, uh, I don't, and I don't have a placard, uh, so, so I'm, I have selfish reasons, I also speak for quite a few of them who can't be here tonight, so, that's, that's about the, just what I had in mind.
Thank you, Bob.
And furthermore, uh, I dearly hope if we go to the depot, that the 500-year flood doesn't come every three years.
You and me both.
Well said, well said, yep.
I don't think I'm supposed to speak, but anyway, my major concern is what it costs to maintain the senior citizen center. The utility bill down there's been $1,200 a month, or up, plus the fact, at one time, there was money coming from, from the county, and they don't, they don't help us anymore. and they don't, they don't help us anymore. I don't, I don't know how the board is paying the bills down there. I do not know. But if you guys are gonna heat what we need and cool what we need and give us, and somebody says, there's no kitchen. Well, I've already heard you're gonna put a kitchen in, so if you're gonna fix that up so it's really nice, I think, I think we'd be a fool.
Yeah, I, I think, I think you probably still have some utility bills, but it'll be substantially less than where it's at now, cause you'll have that one area.
So, yeah, the, just for delineation, the, shoot, the restaurant on North End there was set up, has its own electric and gas service, that's separate metered, separate water service. So that small portion, there, the bills would still, the utility bills would still be there.
What about sprinkler system?
But.
Where they are now, they're paying sprinkler system for upper and down in the basement too.
The main area is on the city's bill, so that, there's, there still is utility bills down in that location. We don't know what they would be, but they would be, they would be significantly less.
I'll tell you what, I think we're in good shape here. Nick's gonna put together some numbers and to make sure that everybody's satisfied. You guys have a meeting on Friday. Talk, talk it out, you know, and make sure that everybody's satisfied with it moving forward. But I think this'll be a better deal when it's all said and done. I really do. And if you guys don't, when we, when we come back and I have our, we have our conversation, do we have two that's gonna be able to make it to the meeting?
I could go.
I could go.
Yeah, I'm fine over there.
I can, I'll, I'll be in town. I could do it if one of you two can't.
Yeah, I always go.
Okay, okay. So, and we'll, we'll connect and make sure that everybody's satisfied. We, I can speak for the council on this. We've had private conversations. We all know that we're getting older except for this one. She's Peter Pan. But for the rest of us, we haven't forgotten about you. Yes, sir?
May I ask you one question?
Yes, sir.
How's that maintained during the wintertime? Right now downtown, we gotta go over snowdrifts to get into the buildings.
Nick's gonna answer that for you.
Good question. Nick's gonna address that for you. He's coming up right now. Thank you, sir.
With the depot as it is, we currently remove all the snow around the facility because of the Amtrak customers. So on the outside perimeter, all the sidewalk, we push that right now. So we do do the, we do the senior center, but typically it is in a line of succession. If you're talking about what property maintenance does for snow removal, if we were to no longer to do the current facility or something on Jefferson, actually probably would make it quicker for us to get down to the depot, so.
Go ahead.
Did any of you seniors catch his double do? He said, we do do. Did you catch, you caught that? Appreciate that. I appreciate it. So, are we good? Okay. Thank you guys for coming down. We appreciate it and we're gonna get something figured out on this.
So, Matt, you can, you can make it?
Yeah.
And Linda's there anyway?
They had a quick question. Marilyn asked if the parking passes are still valid. Yes.
Yep.
Yes. Can we get you moved?
Thank you, guys.
We still, we still may need to do something, cause that's gonna take a lot of time.
What, what time is the meeting on Friday?
It's one to 1:30.
One to 1:30?
It's, it's lit for a long time. We haven't dealt with it. It's just that we get to where we hit it.
You said it's one to 1:30. It's only half our meet.
No, one or 1:30 is what it means. So can you get an exact time? Then if you can't for some reason, give me a call.
I'm, I'm good.
Okay, good. Please. So one of the, two of the three of us get down there.
Yeah, those that are at home, we're waiting on the council chambers to clear out. They came in numbers tonight.
I probably need to make sure that the elevator stays looking warm.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, they just changed the meeting times. It used to be 9:30. I think it's 1:00.
That's right, my friend. Make no mistake about it. All right.
And let me know.
Hey, I need somebody to call my phone when we get done.
It's been 9:30 forever. It just changed this.
Don't forget.
Right now?
No, since we get done with this meeting. I think my car's on my phone, but I don't know if it's on vibrate. I can't even feel it. Okay, we're gonna move right along to, number two is a motion for preliminary adoption of the second reading of an ordinance emitting section 58.13, type A permit, general standards of chapter 58 noise control of Burlington Municipal Code. CDK, you gonna handle that?
Uh.
I'll say you've already handled it, but.
Yeah, Major Grimshaw should've been up here and talked about a little bit last work session and then the first reading was last council meeting that I missed, but if there's any more questions, I'll be happy to answer them if you have any. I don't know, I haven't got any feedback outside of these meetings to say any difference.
Does anybody have any questions on?
I made some phone calls and nobody had any objections that are in potential areas to be affected.
Everybody I talked to was happy about it, so.
Not getting any pushback, so.
I, I'm in the same boat. I think everybody was happy about it, especially since it's set up to be accommodating.
Yeah, the only, the only thing that could come up is that commercial zone, commercially zoned area. We have to keep that in mind, so that would be the only area that would add a little confusion later on down the road, just so if they have questions about it, they can call and ask.
Sounds good.
Sounds good. I'm good.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Number three is motion for the final adoption of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of right-of-way located adjacent to 1815 to 1845 Des Moines Avenue, Burlington, Iowa. Tisdale?
No changes from the previous two readings. Again, vacating and selling portion of right-of-way adjacent to Carley Nelson. They own most of the property on either side and are looking to improve the driveways within the alley and right-of-way for their adjacent property use.
Everybody satisfied?
Yes.
Let's move to the consent. Number one is a resolution approving nuisance abatements for various properties. Good. Number two is a resolution approving final acceptance, final payment and release of retention monies for the 2018 Patterson Street Erosion Repair Project. Mr. McGregor?
This project here, if you don't know, Patterson Street is as parallel and just north of Agency Street. It's a project that occurred when we had a heavy rainstorm, I think two years ago in September, and had a significant washout. Rather than doing a retaining wall or a gabion basket wall, we decided to purchase the property below it and get the grade out. So you see the final project cost is at $84,000. Originally it was contracted out at $71,000. The big, the jump between the difference of where it was originally contracted and final bill was a quantity adjustment. There's a little bit more dirt than was expected and then some more asphalt was added. It looks a lot better than what it did. I'll say that much. So it's a pretty low-traveled roadway. It's not a very wide road, but at least access is now given to, to two points through there, so.
Questions for Nick? All right, thanks, Nick. Number three is a resolution approving the change order for the 2017 Harrison Avenue Stewart. Let me back up and try that again. A resolution approving the change order for the 2017 Harrison Avenue Storm Sewer Improvements. Mr. McGregor?
This project is at the end of Harrison Street. Before it goes over the bluff, we have a kind of a sewer, a sanitary and storm sewer, kind of a combination problem that we're trying to correct. We originally contracted this out with FI Excavating for twenty, for $243,000. We actually had a quantity reduction. Some of it was a change in the way that the project, some of the length of pipes. So we actually have a deduction in $55,000 and so, but the change order dollar does cha, does exceed our threshold to be approved by staff. So that's the reason why you're seeing this here. Brings our total change order quantity to $46,000. So we need to have council approval before we can move forward.
Council? Good, good, good. Okay. Number four is resolution approving purchase of a three six, I'm sorry, of three six-inch replacement pumps for Public Works. Mr. McGregor?
These pumps were damaged during the flood wall breach. They were currently, two of them were in operation. They were pumping when the breach occurred and then they were inundated by water. Then they sat with fairly corrosive waters on it for, for about ten days. So we pulled them in. We, we've had FEMA and our, and our staff take a look at them to come to the conclusion that they're, they're no good. They need to be replaced with new pumps. So in front of you is a purchase of three new pumps for $43,587 from Star Equipment. We actually recently, last year, purchased two of the new ones that are gonna be replaced with this purchase from the same company last year. So FEMA should be reimbursing us. We don't have the final answer that they will, but we feel fairly likely. I don't think we've, know if they'll have a replacement cost reduction out of there. But in order to operate, we do need pumps. For instance, the most recent crest, anytime we get over eighteen foot, we need to have pumps available to pump from our wet well. So we had to rent six-inch pumps. And after a couple months of rental, you can almost buy one. So we definitely need to replace those. We are waiting on kind of the answer from who is the determining factor on saying that the pumps were no good. And we kinda got an answer to that, so that's why it took a while. But my recommendation to be approve this purchase.
You look a little different, Nick. Care to talk about it?
Do I have a little more color in my face?
And your walk a little bit different. It's just something I noticed.
A little taller.
A little taller. Not much, a little bit.
He's got on heels.
Thicker shoes, thicker sole shoes.
I also heard you're a Hawkeye fan now, is that right?
I don't know where you would hear that nasty rumor. I mean, it's getting tougher and tougher to be a Husker fan, but.
True.
Especially when you're married.
I'll stick with him.
Yeah.
All right. You guys have questions for Nick? We're good?
I have a question.
All right.
I'm gonna go back, just a question. You had the second reading on the noise control?
Yeah.
Were you okay to?
Yeah, yeah, just do that. Is there any way we can go straight to the end?
That could take, this is the final reading.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay, before the chief comes, I would like to recognize Jim made it to the cover of the Rolling Stone.
What's that little text box say?
Picture and article written by Leah Anderson. Just for those that wanted to know. He's a pretty important person, so we're pretty proud of that. So anyway, moving forward, number five is a resolution approving the intergovernmental transfer of public funds?
Wait, wait, you forgot something really important. The shirt and the tie in that picture.
We brought that up last.
Is it the same?
It's the same one. This guy.
All right, he needs prayer.
A resolution approving the intergovernmental transfer of public funds agreement between the Iowa Department of Human Services.
Is it Monday?
It is. That's your TV tie.
Monday, Monday.
That's your TV tie. We'll get to it, chief. Just give us a few minutes here. We gotta wait till we're done picking on.
Ready?
Wait, isn't that the same white shirt you always wear?
Nice.
Jim, you're out of order again. See if we can last time we can back the gavel on you. Chief, please continue.
Okay, so just a reminder what G E M T stand is all about. It's the Ground Emergency Medical Transport Funding. And so it's basically a makeup payment between what it costs us to provide ambulance transport versus what we get reimbursed for Medicaid only. And this is the last, our last official step. Just letting them know, yes, we agree to participate in the program and yes, we're gonna pay you back a portion of what we collect. It's kinda complicated or convoluted, however you wanna say it, that they'll start reimbursed, we'll get reimbursed $1,183 per Medicaid patient, but we have to pay back forty percent of that to the state of Iowa, Department of Human Services. So we're gonna net around $710 per transport for Medicaid patients, so. If it all works, I mean, you hate to, haven't seen a dime yet, but if it all works like it should.
Haven't seen a penny.
It, it should amount to somewhere around $400,000 a year or more for ambulance revenue.
That'd be fantastic.
So it will be fantastic. So we're really looking forward to starting submitting some claims. It's supposed to go back to July 1st of this year, so we'll see. Hopefully by budget presentation, we have some actual revenue figures to throw out here, so.
Everybody's good with that, right?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Chief. Number six is a resolution of support and financial commitment for the Main Street program in the city of Burlington, Iowa.
We have to do this every two years and maybe I'll let Steve, cause he knows the requirements that the state has in regards to this three-way partnership.
Steve, while you're speaking tonight, if you reference me, I would prefer that you call me Grand Marshall tonight. Thank you.
I appreciate it, Mr. Grand Marshall. And, and I appreciated the support for people with gray hair, so. I, I won't go through and read, read everything in here, cause I know it was in your packet. Every, like Jim said, every two years, we go through a three-way agreement between the Iowa Economic Development Authority, downtown partners in the city of Burlington, just to make sure everybody's responsibilities are, are laid out. Specifically for the city in section two, supporting and partnering with the local Main Street programs focused on the revitalization of the designated Main Street district, invest financially into the operation of the Main Street program, pass a resolution to support, to demonstrate the city's support, use creative, create tools and resources to support reinvestment and support the program in our annual accreditation process. Pretty much everything that we've already been working on together.
And we provide, we don't provide a significant amount of financial support, but we do provide some through Eric's budget. Is, is that fifteen thousand?
It's fifteen thousand a year since 2006, I think.
Yeah.
So, everybody's good?
I don't see a problem.
All right. I do plan to, the, the work session after this, I'll come and give you guys a, kind of an annual report as well, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freiber.
We are so fortunate to have him. Do you know that, that average duration of someone in his position is only two years?
Well, I was just going to say, I'm surprised that Rhonda's put up with him for as many years as she has, but anyways. All right. Somebody's gonna fight me after this. I can feel it. Number seven is a resolution approving an agreement with municipal pipe tool for Quest GIS information system integration. Mr. McGregor?
So, so this resolution would approve a purchase of $17,825 for, for Q's GIS programming. What it is, is we use camera systems in our sanitary sewer system and then we, we have those videos and we upload them to GIS software, which allows us to store them. We have quite a few terabytes worth of data over the years. We had several, I don't know, stacks of VHS tapes that were converted over. And that's what some of this includes, is we wanna have an easier access system to, to be able to store and then pull that dat, data up when necessary, so.
Will this be accessible by the public?
Typically not because of the amount of data. It's difficult to have on those public sites.
Okay.
So I would say no.
But I mean, if information was needed, I'm sure through a presentation.
Absolutely. If their homeowner has some questions about stuff, we, we are more than willing to help them or even show them the videotape of kinda where their lateral comes in and whatnot, so.
We're good?
I'm good.
Thank you, sir. Number eight?
Did I hear a snicker from the whippersnapper over there, the young whippersnapper, when he said VHS tapes? I thought I did. All right, sorry.
You thought, correct, my friend. Number eight, resolution approving an agreement with Burt Gurney and Associates for permanent flow meters. Mr. McGregor?
So VHS tapes are, are a black cassette tape.
Do you use a pencil to rewind it?
Then you have to rewind it when you're done watching. Sorry. So the, the permanent flow metering is, is at the end of Harrison and Cascade Basin, both of which we've separated. We need to monitor the flow. Anytime we have any sort of heavy rain events, we, we will have the potential for sanitary sewer overflows and per the DNR, we need to be able to track that. And we need to track that through flow meters. And so we need to purchase these to be able to put them in the end of that, so we can be able to provide that data to the DNR.
So, quick question. I went through the sewer master plan and it had flow rates for that area. Didn't we not already have those meters in there?
I'm sorry, flow rates?
The, the, cause it measures the amount of water that runs through there, right?
Mm-hmm.
So in the sewer master plan, they had information for that? Did, did they bring?
Some, well, I mean, we've talked about flow meters, the need for them, not only there, but at the end of the CSO locations, the combined sewer overflows.
Yeah.
In the integrated plan, but we already just, we did discuss them some in the sewer master plan. At the Cascade, we, we need the sewer, this flow meter also to size an equalization chamber. So when we do have heavier rain events, we don't necessarily have the SSO. We have some capacity to be able to put that into a tank, similar to what we have at the Gunnison. And I can't think of the other one. Lucas. So flow meter, the, these flow meters will be something that will be coming through for some other reasons. It's, it's good data to have. Ultimately, it'll be good data for Dawn to have, not only at the plant, but at the lift stations. Potentially as we get more controls that are electronic and automated, so.
Good?
You good?
Number nine is.
You're making light of her.
Of age jokes?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm getting older. I'm a married man.
Everybody knows, marriage ages you like ten years.
There it is.
All right.
I haven't even sent out wedding thank yous yet.
No doubt, no doubt. Number nine is a resolution approving purchasing policies and procedures. Man, I can't believe we only had three people that took out nomination papers. We're having such a good time down here. Steph?
Okay, so we last updated these policies in November of 2017. So what you have in the packet is anything that I've added, I've highlighted in yellow, just so you can see what most of the changes that I've referenced are, have to do with federal grants. So as we're going down this FEMA process, this must be a new requirement for them, that our purchasing policy references all the federal requirements. have to do with federal grants. So as we're going down this FEMA process, this must be a new requirement for them, that our purchasing policy references all the federal requirements. When we look at our policies compared to what the federal, we are more restrictive and we are gonna stay that way. But we do, we will reference that we're also following their policies and that's part of it, that, you know, local governments can follow. They can be more restrictive, they just can't be less restrictive. So, um, you'll see, like I said, if you go through the, the highlights, um, I also updated with the chapter twenty-six changes, July first of every year, the Iowa, Iowa changes their thresholds. It's usually a thousand dollars is the dollar amount that I changed, but I went ahead and updated those too. Does anybody have any questions? It's, like I said, it's a lot of just wording references to the federal, the federal policies, so. I did add the word cumulative change order to, to specify that.
On the ten percent?
On the ten percent, so that's more clear when we need to come to you to, um, have you approve change orders, so.
And the Iowa code references are the, like the forty-eight thousand, a hundred and thirty-six thousand, or whatever it is?
Yep.
Those, those numbers are the ones that change based off of state changes.
Mm-hmm.
I love how you opened up, Steph. We're more restrictive and we're gonna stay that way.
Yes.
Right on, right on. You guys satisfied?
No.
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Steph. Number ten is a resolution obligating funds, excuse me, a resolution obligating funds from the Burlington Crossing, T I. T I F, TIF rebate sub fund of the city's urban renewal tax revenue fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment rebate payments due to be paid in the succeeding fiscal year. Steph?
So the next four resolutions are all doing the same thing, just with the different entities that we have development agreements with. So what we do every year at this time is, um, I get an estimate from Cheryl over at Des Moines County of how much TIF revenue that we're gonna take in based on these projects that we have set up, um, and then you annually appropriate that we're gonna pay these companies these amounts that we've approved. So that's just something, that's part of the law, that we just, we do it annually. Um, so, these are estimates, again, that we get from the county. I do round up a little bit, so the entities that see these amounts, these are the, the max that you'll get. Most likely it'll be less, because I don't wanna have to come back to you after we're receiving revenues and have to get more appropriated. So I do round up a little bit on all of them, but, so the four development agreements we have that are applicable to this next fiscal year, and this is, we're talking F Y twenty-one is what we're appropriating here, um, is the Burlington Crossing, the Grow Greater Burlington Partnership, Park West LLC, which is the new one, um, and then the Weingard TIF, so. But if you have any questions or.
Can we just certify these annually, right?
Yes.
It's good.
Can we approve ten through thirteen all in one measure?
Well, she just covered them, but I'm gonna read them all the same.
Yeah, go ahead and read them.
And just for background, like the Burlington Crossing was a twelve-year agreement, six years a hundred percent, six at eighty percent for reimbursement, maximum of ten million dollars. Uh, this last year was the first year of a rebate. They received fifty thousand. And I'm not, I can't remember what it is for this year, and you see that she's got an estimate there for two hundred sixty thousand this next year.
It's like two twenty this year, so.
What year, what year are we in? This is year five or six?
So, F Y nineteen was the first year.
Okay.
So the, what we're doing here will be for the third year of that twelve-year agreement.
So I have a spreadsheet that's out on the website that, um, under the finance department, hasn't been updated. I'll update it after we make these December payments for F Y twenty, but that, it's a recap of what we've paid to each one of these, what year the agreement's in, and, and it kinda shows you a little bit more what the limits are. But again, the one I have out there would be from last year, but I'll be updating it before the first of the year, so it'll give you a better idea.
Yeah, and like the Grow Greater Burlington, we had set that up as a five hundred thousand dollar reimbursement for their spec building, what they lost on that project. We, they are not gonna get five hundred thousand. Uh, they've gotten a hundred and thirty-four thousand through the first five years. Uh, they'll get more than that the second five years, but they will not get their, their five hundred thousand that they had anticipated. And I didn't, Park West is only at five thousand for an estimate, and that'll, this'll be the first year of a ten-year agreement on them. That means that we'll start to have some funds that we'll have set aside too in a separate, uh, housing, housing program that we'll have to have some, we'll have to set up some objectives for that, and that's something that Eric's department's gonna need to work on as we go into this budget season. And then the Weingard agreement was a ten-year agreement.
Yeah, and this is the sixth year, so now they're down to fifty percent.
Yep, so they're, they were seventy-five percent the first five and fifty percent the second five. They were to receive a total of, a maximum of one point four million, and they got five hundred and forty thousand the first five. I'd say they're not gonna hit their total over, over the ten-year agreement.
So what's our projected, what's the projected city's net this year from the Weingard?
Uh.
Now that we're going down to fifty?
I didn't even look at the, I hadn't gotten to that. What's our anticipated payment to them? Cause it'd be the same.
Fifty percent is a hundred and thirty thousand. I'm appropriating a hundred and fifty, so a hundred and thirty is what we'll get to keep.
Yeah, and it, it goes, essentially goes into our overall consolidated TIF, and we try to, within our TIF, um, the, the different TIF projects, we try to base repayments on projects that we've done to use, what, about two and, two and a half million dollars annually of, uh, TIF debt and release the rest of the TIF valuation to the general fund for, and other entities.
So if, since these are TIF projects, how much L M I money, if any, is sitting out there for these?
Uh, they, none. It's only the housing project that has L M I.
Alright, so the commercial stuff doesn't have any L M I tattooed?
You guys satisfied?
I'm good.
Okay. I'm just gonna go ahead and read these, Steph, and then if you.
Yeah, and then we have one more.
And we didn't cover the, that internal loan from the general fund to tax increment. Uh, we tr- we cover our operat- some of our operating costs in the general fund that are associated with TIF. We'll, we work with Bob Jostens on TIF questions. Sometimes we set up a, a TIF project that we never do, uh, but we still have the bills to do the, uh, we have a, a sign, a decent amount of staff time that goes into working on these projects on an ongoing basis, so we've just, we've put aside twenty thousand that we try to cover for, uh, those type of administrative costs out of the general fund for TIF-related work on an annual basis. I don't know that we've had less than twenty thousand dollars worth of time that's gone into it in any given year at, at this point. We typically are well over that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, uh, number eleven is a resolution of obligating funds from the Greater Burlington Partnership, TIF rebate, uh, sub fund of the city's urban renewal tax revenue fund for the appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment rebate payments due to be paid in the succeeding fiscal year. We covered that. Number twelve is a resolution obligating funds from the Park West LLC, TIF rebate sub fund of the city's urban renewal tax revenue fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment rebate payments due to be paid in the succeeding fiscal year. We covered that. Uh, number thirteen is a resolution obligating funds from the Weingard TIF rebate sub fund of the city's urban renewal tax revenue fund for appropriation to the payment of annual appropriation tax increment rebate payments due to be paid in the succeeding fiscal year, and we covered that. And then number fourteen is a resolution authorizing internal loan from general fund to tax increment revenue fund, and Jim just covered that. Are we good to move forward, guys?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, we have a hearing set for, uh, uh, November eighth. The first is consideration of a sale of portion of property locally known, I'm sorry, located south of the property locally known as seven oh nine South Eighth Street, city of Burlington, Iowa, with conditions. And then B is consideration of plans and specs for two thousand nineteen Lewis Street sewer repair. You gonna say anything on that, Mr. T? Okay. Uh, discussion items, number one, treasurer's report. Annette, class of eighty-seven.
Okay, there's again two treasurer's report in the packet. Um, we are actually, they started the audit today.
Sweet.
So, hopefully we'll be finalizing this. Um, nothing's changed, and then September's treasurer's report is also in the packet. There's nothing that I noticed that's out of the ordinary, so unless you guys have any specific questions, I mean, a lot of things are just timing or waiting for reimbursement from.
I didn't, I didn't see the, uh, figure on how much the city's going to save by taking away my parking pass. Oh, none? Then I think I'll keep it then.
No, you're coughing that.
Alright. You just ordered it today, go play. Questions you guys for now?
I don't have any.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number three is fire department annual report. Chief?
Okay, well, first off, I, well, thanks for giving me this opportunity to present our annual report. I changed it up to a fiscal year report. It was my recommendation. I don't think I'm gonna do it again. It's kinda confusing, our calendar years and fiscal years, but this year will be a fiscal year report anyway. And second thing, it's really hard to cram a year's worth of information into something that people are gonna wanna read through, so. Hopefully this is, uh, be informational. There may be some formatting errors in your copy, so that's part of the presentation tonight. You have to find those in there. So there's the table of contents. There's our organizational chart, uh, for this last year. Not, not really anything has changed. Uh, we do have a vacancy. We're hoping to fill next month. We just got done with recruit testing. Um, I went through there and just kinda looked, you know, what are the seniority levels of the different people on our department? We currently have seventeen people on our department that have five years or less on the job, so that's a good chunk, but we also have sixteen people with twenty years or more. So we got a good base of experience or a good mix of experience levels on our fire department, so I feel really good about that. Uh, the next page is just kind of our department at a glance, so, uh, hopefully you're familiar with how we operate, uh, now, but we have forty-nine people total, four are administrative daytime shift, and then we have three shifts of fifteen, so each day we have a minimum staffing of eleven. Uh, that breaks down below there to the three stations. We, central station will have a battalion chief and ambulance crew and an engine crew. Station two, an ambulance crew, uh, and an engine crew, and then station three, that's our ambulance crew only. And then I think I've talked about this before, but our territory for, for fires, Burlington and then the quad townships, which encompass a hundred and ten square miles and about thirty thousand, a little over thirty thousand people, uh, for the ambulances, that, and then the towns of Middletown, Danville, West Burlington, townships of Danville, Pleasant Grove, and then, uh, Gulfport, Illinois. So about a hundred and ninety-nine square miles and a little over thirty-six thousand for a population. And then Henderson County, we just signed that recent agreement where we're doing second up ambulance service over there, and then we do all their paramedic level intercepts. I believe the last fiscal year, that was around two hundred and eighty-eight calls where we were over in Henderson County. I did something new this year. I had each of the chief officers provide a report, so I'll leave those for you to review. I just wanna briefly hit maybe one or two things in each one of those. So starting with my own, um, there were three things in this report that, the overall report that I thought were worth really hitting on, and that was our, call volumes increasing, which I've been saying that pretty much every year, a little bit about station three, and then our personnel. And I'll cover the first two at the end of the report, so right now I'm just gonna jump down here to the last, next to last paragraph and just read it here. It says, "Nothing contained in this report would be possible without the dedication and professionalism of members of the department. Hardly a day goes by where I'm not witness to, read about, or am told about members going above and beyond the expectations of the community. I am honored and privileged to work with people who are pursuing perfection and putting the needs of the community above their own." So you, you probably know about ninety percent of what we do never makes it in the newspaper, the radio, or social media, and there's a lot of different reasons for that, but we'd get a, a ton of support from the community, and we really appreciate that. The community, the council, uh, everybody's been super supportive. Uh, skipping over to the fire marshal's report. A lot of people just consider him, he's the Fire Prevention Bureau. It's a, it's a, it's a one-person show over there, but it's more than just fire prevention. It's really community risk reduction. A lot of departments have made that change in title. A few of his highlights, uh, that, he completed a switch over of all reporting and inspection software to emergency reporting. That's our vendor. Uh, we were twenty years with one vendor, so switching software vendors was a really big deal for our department. So now we have inspections, fire reporting, and EMS reporting, all with one vendor and one software suite, which is really nice. Uh, he participated in a hundred and twenty-one fire investigations, so that's a lot, and a lot of, some of those maybe take a day. You can go there and, and case solved. You know, put your stamp on it, send the report, and you're done. Others of them take days, weeks, months. Some take years. The Tamah Fire is still an open investigation. And I've told, I think I've told other people this before, that Mark is, he's so well-respected in the state. People are constantly calling him for his opinion on, on matters especially related to fire investigations. We're really lucky to have him. And then down below, he, he relates some statistics, uh, for fire in Burlington. Kitchen, the number one place for a fire to start, and no surprise because of some, something related to cooking, and that's pretty much.
Especially if Shane's cooking.
And that's, and that's nationwide. You know, that, that statistic's pretty much true station, or nationwide. I was gonna say stationwide. It is. Our only fire in the station was a cooking fire. So, uh, one of the things I thought here is, man, if we could just, we could have people not cook after midnight, we would cut out about fifty percent of the cooking fires, because.
I'll bet.
People put something in the stove or the oven and then sit on the couch, like, I'm gonna watch a little TV, and they fall asleep. It happens all the time. And then the, the very last stat there is like, man, that's still true in Burlington. I don't think, it seems like we should've made a dent in this statist- statistic, being how we've put in over three thousand smoke alarms in the last five or six years, but fifty percent of our residential fires were, they're, they have no working smoke detectors. So that's just a, you know, I hate to tell people, we have no, no reason not to, but they really don't. Uh, we go, we just went around this last weekend over off of uh, agency like the Burlington Avenue area and did a canvas, and any house that needed smoke alarms, we put up smoke alarms. They're free and we put them in for free, so, uh, anybody that wants them, give us a call and we'll put those in, so.
But a reminder, you still have to replace the batteries, though.
Still, you can call us and we'll put new batteries in even, so we'll do anything. We really want you to have working smoke alarm, so. Uh, skipping over now to the deputy chief's report, and just to highlight a little bit in the middle, so first I wanna say, we're, we're very fortunate with our apparatus, so. Since I've been the fire chief, not that that has anything to do with it, all of our first-out vehicles, our command car, our three ambulances and our two engines have been, are new since I've been the chief, so nothing's older than a twenty thirteen, which, that's never been the case on the fire department, so that's, I mean, we're, we are, we know that's a, a great benefit and we're all very thankful for that. So he makes a statement about maintaining a safe and reliable fleet. That, that's the deputy chief's main, not his main, but one of his main things that he takes care of, that and station maintenance, and it's a big chore. Our oldest, or, our first-out ambulances, the, the oldest one is a twenty thirteen, and it has a hundred and sixty-five thousand miles on it, and that's a vehicle that every day is going on several calls a day, so, uh, do put a lot of miles on our vehicles.
The twenty thirteen has, how much again?
A hundred and sixty-five thousand miles on it.
It just doesn't work.
Uh, the next few, three reports are from the battalion chiefs, and so, back when we eliminated the deputy chief of trainings position, we had to divide up that person's duty, so we kind of assigned each battalion chief, uh, set of different duties, and you'll see that reflected in their reports. Uh, first shift is battalion chief Wagner, and his shift is in charge of the fire training, and so that takes up the bulk of their extra duties that they, they do, which is a huge, uh, chore. Um, trying to keep up with the hours and the topics required for fire training, and that's definitely something that's a work in progress. Um, then I'm gonna skip down to his last little paragraph there. He talks about our ARF training, our aircraft rescue and firefighter training. We, we've, I think this is our fourth year using the ARF specialists from Minnesota. They come down with a prop, and they do four-hour blocks of training, three or four of those, and, uh, they do some live fire training, and then, which is great, we get to use our truck on their prop, putting out fires. But he's really big on making sure that we do a search. It's like a fuselage of an airplane. I don't know if you've ever had a chance to see it, but not only do we have to put the fire out, but we have to search this thing, and he's, he likes to play a lot of tricks on us. You know, we always have to find the baby. Well, sometimes he has like four or five babies in this one plane, so, er, you have to do a really good search, so, that's, it's just such a good, I don't know, I was gonna say it's our most popular training event that we hold every year, so. Uh, second shift, they're in charge of, he says special losses, basically anything that's not fire. Uh, second shift, they're in charge of, he says special losses, basically anything that's not fire or EMS, uh, is what they do, and they do community risk reduction. Uh, that was Battalion Chief Workman that accepted the, uh, oh, the, uh, Fire Prevention Week proclamation a couple of weeks ago. Uh, this is his area of expertise, so, uh, he was able to get a couple of grants, worked with the Elks Club last year, which we've been getting this grant several years, which is great. It's a three thousand dollar grant where we buy all of our, our smoke detectors that we put up. So the city, the fire department doesn't buy those. We get, uh, grants or donations for those. Alliant also provided a one thousand dollar grant last year. So we put in four hundred smoke alarms last year, over three thousand since the program started in twenty thirteen. And then he didn't mention it in here, but he is also in charge of the Remembering When program, that, the Senior Fire and Fall Prevention Program. He was just out today giving a presentation at, uh, Hamilton Place. And I really like his little quote. So I didn't, I just told him I need a report. Well, he put in here, "We have a busy and productive year." He says, "We don't have to come to work. We get to come to work." And I think that's a great attitude, and if you know Bruce Workman, I'm sure he really does believe that. Third shift, uh, they're in charge of all things EMS, so the ambulances, the supplies, the training. I'm just gonna highlight one thing under his EMS operations highlight, and that is the instructor, or the, uh, the hours of EMS training. So last year we had one thousand five hundred and sixty-two hours of ongoing EMS training. So our paramedics need sixty hours every two years, so every year they need thirty hours. So that works out to about thirty hours per person last year, which is right on track. And we started contracting out most of this training to Jim Stefan, who's the paramedic instructor at, uh, SCC. So our paramedic training, thanks a lot to the, to the Battalion Chief here and his committee that's called the Emsig or EMS Improvement Group. Um, our EMS training is, is great. We have, you know, better than it's ever been since I've been on the department by far. Uh, Jim also does some of our continuous quality improvement. He reviews a lot of our reports, looks for certain trends, and then a lot of times our training will spawn off of that, like we're missing a certain thing or whatever, and he'll review that in his training class. The last thing there, per, and not in the EMS operations highlight, he has purchased and entered into service seven fifty-three. Our first-out ambulance was a Stryker Power Load System designed to improve crew and patient safety. So right now, now all we've, we've, uh, you approved the purchase of two other ones, so all, the three first-out ambulances have this, uh, power load system. Well, I went back and looked at injuries, and so we really started focusing on back injuries, like twenty fourteen, fifteen. I don't know if you remember that. We had some years with like six, seven, eight back injuries per year. Some of those were people being off for months and months. Uh, we're, they're gonna hate me for even mentioning it. Two years in a row now, we haven't had a single lifting injury, so. Overall, injuries are way down, but lifting injuries in specific, specifically, we've had none. And I have not forwarded this thing. I'm sorry. All right. If I forget to do that, please remind me. All right, twenty nineteen budget at a glance, I, I realize this ain't a budget presentation, so I'm gonna kinda zoom through these. But our approved budget for FY twenty nineteen was five million five hundred and eighty-four thousand. Actual expenditures, five million four eighty-six, so it's somewhere around a hundred thousand dollars under budget. Uh, our anticipated revenue was one million nine hundred and sixty-one thousand. We brought in one million nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand. So the, basically, the net cost to the City of Burlington was three million five hundred and forty-six thousand. I, I bring that up just to say that's a very good net cost for a fire department of our size. So if you look at any other departments in Iowa that are, uh, doing ambulance service, or even if they're not do, running an ambulance service, say like in a Tamwa or a Marshalltown, their net cost is, isn't gonna be higher than that, and they're not running EMS as part of their department. And then I included this little box down here. I, one of our historians, either, uh, Bill Ewing or Terry Obrus, provided this, but I don't remember the year, but I just wanted to show you that we have cut out all of our vet bills and our horse feed. So we no longer-
I, I was gonna say, that's great, say, what happened to the horse feed bill?
I just thought that was really interesting. There's a lot of other stats over there on the side. I'm, well, I guess I didn't wanna talk about the fire overtime last year. We budgeted a hundred and thirty. Luckily, we came in at a hundred and ten thousand, which I say luckily because nobody wants to see a lot of fire department overtime, 'cause they need their, they need a break. They don't need to be coming in for overtime. Uh, the Tama Fire was a little over ten thousand dollars of overtime just for that one event, so. Did I have the, yes, and I wanna talk about the ambulance overtime. I'm sorry. It's on the side there. That, all of that is reimbursed overtime, so that's taken ambulance transfers, so going to Iowa City, Genesis, wherever, or, uh, special event standby. So a lot of the MMA fights, they have us, they pay us to go standby, so we get reimbursed, uh, for all that. All right. Twenty nineteen, uh, EMS. I put in here the ambulance unit commitment time. So basically, you can read that as a, the, the point two zero, that's basically twenty percent. So that's an ambulance seven fifty-three, which is now our busiest ambulance. It was busy. It was on a call, so either from dispatch to back in service, uh, that's that time. Twenty percent of the time, it's, it's assigned to a call. The other ones were about eighteen percent of the time. And you might think, wow, that's kinda low, right? You know, half the day or three-quarters of the day, they're not, they're not on a call. Well, they still have to do training. They have to do their reports when they get back. They have to do rig checks, public education. And yes, in a twenty-four hour shift, they do have to rest. Uh, we're a little different than, say, a Superior Ambulance or any other ambulance that does hospital-to-hospital transports, right? They can schedule those whenever they want, or they can, they can turn them down. If they're too busy, they can say, no, we're not doing it. For nine-one-one, we don't get that option. When they call, we have to go. So you do have to have, uh, you can't be busy all the time. I think I might already talk about the ambulance revenue. Last year was one point three million. Our EMS training hours were one thousand five sixty-two, and then the out-of-county transfers, it's up a little bit maybe from last year. Um, a hundred and thirty-one, so that's mostly to the University of Iowa. And then I thought training hours were so important, I put them in there twice. Except for if you look at the one up here, I didn't, I took it out. And then our EMS stats.
Just, uh, what's, what's the normal out-of-county transfer stuff to Iowa City?
Our, we've been running around a hundred per year. But it, it fluctuates a lot. Can't really explain what that is. I, I would think they'd be less 'cause a lot of the cardiac-related stuff that we used to take transfers for, they actually handle a great river, so we don't take as many cardiac patients as we used to.
Don't you think the average patient maybe is older and sicker and needs more advance?
Yeah. Overall, our calls are up, so it makes sense that that, those would be up too.
It's called the Silver tsunami.
Yes. Our other EMS stats are, we, we actually transported three thousand two hundred and nineteen patients last year, did six hundred and thirty-five EKGs, and then there's our IV attempted and successful rate is seventy-one percent, which you might think, man, that's not very good. You miss like a quarter of the times, you know, starting IVs. Well, if you just think about when you're in a hospital setting, how often does the doctor or the nurse not get the IV? Oh, it happens, you know? Maybe not thirty percent of the time. But now throw in, every one of these people's in poor physical condition. That's why they're in the ambulance. There's something going on. We're bouncing down the road. We don't have very good light. A lot of times it's, you know, the second time, they try to get in, they get it, so. Same with the intubations. And then the Lucas device, I don't know if everybody's familiar with what that is. That's our mechanical CPR device. That was applied thirty-two times last year. And that doesn't mean that's, that's the only times we did CPR, 'cause there's some patients that doesn't, it doesn't fit on them, so. We don't always get to use the Lucas device, although we try.
Could you explain what an intubation is, please?
Yeah, an endotracheal intubation, that's, somebody's not breathing, you open up their airway and you stick the tube down in there. You gotta see the vocal cords to put it in.
All right, we can ask you to craft a card.
But we have other devices, so if that doesn't work, or you look in there and you're like, I can't see the vocal cords, then we have combi tubes, or not combi tubes, uh, Lucas or King airway devices. I haven't been a paramedic for a while on the ambulance. It's a King device. It's a blind insertion device that you just stick it in their mouth and blow up the, uh, balloon, and it works a hundred percent of the time, so. All right, Station three. And I didn't wanna make a big deal out of Station three, 'cause this has been awesome, not only for the department, but for the City of Burlington. So if you don't know, our address is thirty-four hundred Mount Pleasant Street, also known as the Mount Pleasant Street Bakery. Um, we moved in there in November, so I used the stats from January to June thirtieth, just to have six months of even stuff there. So in six months' time, that, uh, station responded eight hundred and eight calls. Four hundred and thirteen of those were in Burlington, so about fifty percent. Two hundred and twenty calls were in West Burlington. Uh, six hundred and thirty-seven were EMS, twenty-six were building fires. And they had an average turnout time of one minute and twenty seconds, which I thought was kinda interesting, 'cause it's actually better than the other two stations. So that means from when the alarm goes off until they're en route to the call, that's the turnout time. And you can kinda see from the picture over there with the ambulance, off to the left there is where the stairs are that go into where our little office is. So they have a lot less walking distance. They just walk right out, and there's their ambulance in the bay there. The station's really small if you ever go in there. They got a kitchen, day room, and two, two little bedrooms, so. I wanted to do a couple actual response time comparisons, so I picked places where we respond to a lot. So twenty-one seventeen Northern Drive, uh, we had eight calls there last year. From Station three, it's one point eight miles. From Central Fire Station's three point four miles. It's a three-minute versus a six-minute, uh, drive time. So we save about three minutes responding from Station three, which is awesome. And I picked one address, uh, like at the Hope Haven Complex. That's one of the buildings. There's quite a, I'm not sure the number, but we have a lot of calls in that area. Uh, twenty-eight thirty Weingard Drive, Autumn Heights. Uh, in one year's time, we had a hundred and ten calls to that address. So responding from Station three, uh, we save about a minute, uh, on the response time. And when we're talking minutes, minutes in EMS is, it's, it is a big deal. You might think, oh, it's only a minute. Well, that could make the difference in somebody's life. Uh, Station three expenditures up there, I thought was, for, from November to June, we spent a grand total of four thousand seven hundred and ten dollars on that station. Most of that was some garage door work, uh, that we had to have done so we could have emergency access to have the garage doors go up and down and be able to raise them up manually if the power went out, so, uh, we paid for that. And then down below there, it's a little map. I, I couldn't get all of our territory in there, so you're missing a lot of Illinois. But that station went to Danville thirty times, Middletown eighteen, Beaverdale nineteen times, and at least eleven times to Henderson County, which they're second up for. So that means when they went to Henderson County, Central Station was already out on a call, so they responded. They're next up for Henderson County. You're not seeing Glid, or, uh, Oquaca, Bigsville. There's a big chunk of calls that aren't showing up on that little map. Here's Station three. Just a few pictures we took. There's the, a group of the workers from the bakery. They like to come over and visit and hang out with our guys. Our, our turnout gear rack, our address, of course, thirty-four hundred Mount Pleasant Street. Uh, our picture of our ambulance down there at the bottom. What I wrote online that's not on here is, who kinda got this started for us? And that was the president of Mount, Mount Pleasant Street Bakery. His name's Rob Brookhart. I don't know if anybody knows him. I don't know much about his history or where he's from, but he's the president out there, and he's been more than gracious to our fire department. So like I said, he hasn't charged us a cent, not a rent, not a utility bill. Maybe he'll hear me say this and say, what? You can charge, we can charge you rent. But he has not asked for a dime, so we've done a few repairs, you know, to make it livable for us, but as far as rent or utilities or anything like that, nothing. So, uh, I'm sure it, it's kinda nice to have an ambulance crew right there, 'cause we do have calls there, so, uh, that is helpful. Or if they have a fire alarm, we're right there to, to respond, so. Rob Brookhart, that's his name.
Is that V R O K H A R T?
Yep.
Or H, okay.
Uh, moving on to fire. In twenty nineteen, there are just some structure fire containment, uh, stats there. So seven times our, the structure fire was contained to the object of origin, so that's, it started on the bed when we got called. And when we got there, we stopped it, and it was still on the bed, never, or whatever, bed, dresser, some object. Sixteen were, you know, confined to the room where they started. Three were confined to the floor where they started. Fourteen were confined to the building, and zero went beyond the building. So zero of our fires last year went from one building to another building, which is great. Our NFPA seventeen-ten evaluation, so that measures several things, but one that's easy for me to pull the data for is our response times. The harder one is to see, you know, for residential structure fire, they want you to have fifteen people there within nine minutes. I'm having a lot of trouble pulling that out of our reporting software, but for the response time for a fire, the first unit needs to be there in five minutes and twenty seconds. So that's a minute and twenty to get out the door and four minutes to drive there. So eighty-two percent of the time, we do that. So the first unit is there eighty-two percent of the time in less than five minutes and twenty seconds. And then for EMS, we have five minutes, so we get a minute for turnout and four minutes for driving. And we meet that fifty-five percent of the time, and you might think, wow, how can you get to fire so quick and EMS takes so long? Well, EMS is so much busier. A lot of times, we're not getting the closest unit for the EMS call. Where the fire, pretty much the closest station always gets to the fire first. Um, for EMS, a lot of times, like those Henderson County calls, that ambulance is not coming from downtown. It's coming from somewhere else, so farther out, so. Community risk reduction initiatives. When, when you let the senior citizens go, I thought, oh, they should stay for this part. A lot of this is aimed at the senior citizen population, so they're, they are a high-risk population, but, um, just gonna read through the things that we do. Fire, uh, free smoke alarm installations, fire extinguisher training to large groups. Uh, we do it at the station, or we travel around a different industry to do that. Remembering When, our Senior Fire and Fall Prevention Program, the Juvenile Fire Center Program. Uh, we get one or two or three referrals every year, uh, for a juvenile that's already starting fires. Usually it's a parent that maybe catches their kid starting a small fire. They call us and we have an education program for that. Uh, pre-planning, uh, fire response to target hazards. So anything that has a, a high life hazard, like a hotel, a motel, apartments, uh, those are, uh, high target hazards, and so we try to get a pre-plan done for those. So when we show up there, we know where the gas shut-off is, the electric shut-off, how many people are there, contact phone numbers, all kinda stuff. All of that now is electronic, so, uh, if you're not the driver, you can bring it up on the iPad in the vehicle. So when you go there, you just hit it on there, hit the icon, it'll bring up the pre-plan. It'll show you all that stuff electronically, so. We're making a lot of headway on our, on our, uh, pre-planning. The Residential Knox Box Program, we just started last year. I don't know, have a total number, but probably ten or fifteen. And that's similar to a business Knox Box where they lock up their key in, inside the box. We have the key to the box, but their key to the house is in the box. Uh, again, a lot of senior citizens that, a lot of them that have a Life Alert button where they can push it and, and we can be notified. Well, we get there and their door's locked, so we're breaking doors, busting in windows. This just prevents that. We just unlock the box and get the key out. It's a great program. Do a lot of CPR classes for the community. Uh, started doing hotel motel inspections. Guessing, I don't know, four or five years ago, something like that. We never did them before. And you would think, every hotel motel has working smoke alarms, right? You would think, but it's surprising what we find every year when we, we do those, so. And then fire and EMS, uh, training drills, the, our training, that's part of having an effective, uh, emergency response. And then of course, Station three is a big, big part of our community risk reduction. I put a little picture there of that fire hydrant. That's something we started with the help of the, of Burlington Water Works this, just this last year. So that had that, the big connection there is called a Storrs connection. It's, you just take that cap off, and our five-inch large diameter hose hooks right on there. Before, it had a threaded connection, and we'd have to take their cap off, put our adapter on there, and then put our hose on, just an extra step. So they were, they, they did that, and they also changed the, uh, the three-inch outlets on the side from a waterous, uh, hose thread to a national standard, which everybody in the whole country uses national standard except Burlington. We've had waterous, this strange thread that's, you know, fifty years from now, people will, they'll be like, who would ever use waterous, you know? They're gonna be very glad that we, at least at some point in time, said, no more waterous threads. Quit putting waterous threads on hydrants. So we have to adapt all of our trucks to waterous, all of our hoses to waterous. So it's a little confusing for now, but we have a marking system that we're using. It's working out great. Moving on to some of our call data. Uh, I've, I've talked about our number of calls quite a few times, so obviously they're up again. Um, down below there is our calls per zone. You can see Burlington is about thirty-nine hundred calls out of the fifty-eight hundred last year. And if you go down there to the bottom, it says five thousand three hundred and ninety-eight calls, and up above it says- And if you go down there to the bottom, it says five thousand three hundred and ninety-eight calls, and up above it says five thousand three hundred and eighty-nine. That ten-call difference is exposure fire, so down below, if we would go for a car fire and it was in the garage and the garage was part of the fire, we'd have a car in a garage and the garage is called an exposure, you have to do a separate report for that. We usually don't count that as two calls, we count that as one, down below, for some reason, when you run that particular report, it counts exposures as a whole separate response. There's our major incident types for all of last year, eighty percent were EMS. Our average response times per zone, it does this on a straight percentage basis, kinda confusing, so at the very bottom, the city of Burlington got the best response time, it was five minutes and seventy-five one-hundredths of a minute, I guess, however you'd say, however you'd say that, but basically, five minutes and forty-five seconds if you convert it into the seventy-five and a second, so. And that's all of our calls in Burlington.
Man, I don't have any problems in Yellow Spring Township.
Yeah, I was gonna look that up, we, that's actually the township that surrounds Burlington, I'm not sure why that time is so high, other than sometimes when we get called, we got called second to the call, so like, Minneapolis sort of responded, they'd be there for all, like, oh, we need a paramedic up here. And then they call us, uh, we need to, we need to get in our report and change our dispatch time to when we got called, not to when Minneapolis gets called. Sometimes I don't, doesn't know what's happened, so it looks like, oh, it took you forty minutes to get there, well, from when you called us to when we got there was only twenty minutes, cause you took twenty minutes to decide, need a paramedic. So, I'm guessing that's what it is, is it don't take forty-one minutes to go to Minneapolis. All right, so next page, just a little other, some more call data there, I thought it was interesting, the apparatus responses for that time period. So, sometimes it, it doesn't take just an ambulance or just a fire truck, it takes an ambulance and a fire truck, maybe that and a command car, so. Apparatus responses for the whole year was actually seven thousand one hundred and sixty-nine, so nineteen times a day, somebody's going out on an emergency call. And I should say, we don't include, like, when we go do fire, uh, or smoke alarm installations or public education, those aren't calls for service and they're not recorded in here. Uh, seven-twenty-one was our busiest engine, it went on nine hundred and thirty-seven responses. Uh, seven-fifty-one was the busiest ambulance, went two thousand and twenty-five responses during that fiscal year. So, about five point, actually, these are from twenty-eighteen, not the fiscal year. So, it went on about five and a half calls per day. The busiest twenty-four-hour shifts, uh, seven-twenty-one, when the engine went on nine responses in a day, that's out of Central Station. Seven-thirty-four's from Station Two, they went on five. Seven-fifty-one, they went on twelve responses in one day out of Central Station, so I'm not sure if some of those were including fires, but if you think about the average call, taking about an hour or so, not counting coming back and doing a report, that's a lot of calls for an ambulance in one shift. And you can see the other, some of these, like, the seven-fifty-two where it says eleven responses, they had like three or four days where they had eleven responses, just not one. So, in years past, I would have a whole page where I listed all of our challenges and stuff that, you know, we're working on, and I thought, yeah, I'm just gonna highlight the biggest challenge, cause it encompasses, encompasses so much of, of what we're trying to accomplish, and that's training, and there's a lot of things to do with training. Probably the biggest one is trying to accomplish, to hit the topics and the hours of training that we need for your, pretty hard thing to do, so. Where it says there, we need a hundred and ninety-two hours of fire training, well, that's the area, well, we're not, we're not meeting that standard. We are getting the officer training, we're doing pretty good on driver and hazmat training. We are getting the thirty hours of EMS training that now, this just started in the last couple of years, that's doing great, so. Overall, we need somewhere around two hundred and forty-six hours per year, which is like two to three hours per shift, if you're gonna do all your training while you're working. Uh, some other training challenges, no dedicated training officer, no training facility, kinda hard to do live-fire training, uh, when, when I have somewhere to do that. And then more calls equals less time on duty to train. So, I got done writing that, and I thought, well, I'm not gonna stand up here and you think, yeah, he's a big complainer, big whiner, he can't do anything. Well, we, we are trying to address that, that issue, so here's the ways that we're doing it now, so we use a lot more online, self-directed or video-based training. There, it's on, it's on DVDs, not, not the tapes, if you were curious about that. We, we do have a whole library of VHS tapes, but nobody watches those anymore, but we do have a few DVDs.
Do you have a VHS player?
I believe we do, I believe we still do, but they're only-
Does it have tracking?
Yeah, when I started, that, that, a lot of our training was called twenty-four-seven EMS and twenty-four-seven fire, and it was a video-based training. But, you know, some training lends itself very well to online training, right? We have to do bloodborne pathogen training or HIPAA training, like, every year, it's like, okay, I can watch this online, I can take the test, and that's fine, but can't do hands-on, you can't do fire exten- you know, some, a lot of stuff you can't do that way. Uh, we've tried, we've been using, like I said, a lot of contract instructors, so for EMS, uh, for the airport rescue and firefighting, and then for our, our officer training, we use some contract instructors for that. Use of OT to cover on-shift personnel in training, ARF hazmat, out-of-town training, so it's kind of on a case-by-case basis, like the ARF training. It's expensive to have somebody come here from Minnesota, set up the prop, do all this training, so we do pay people to come in on overtime to do that training. Uh, just, just this last couple of weekends, we've had some people that wanted to take fire instructor class, it's a forty-hour certification class. We backfill them with, if needed, some of them didn't need overtime shifts, but we did pay overtime, uh, to cover their shift while they were in class, because we do get a lot of benefit from them being fire instructors, we'll use that later on. Of course, I talked about each battalion chief has some training assignment. Uh, we use a lot of props from, from the state, just this last week, we had a prop out at Station Two, it was a live-fire training prop. So, we can only, we can only have that in Burlington so many days per year, so we always take advantage of that. Uh, they provide the instructors for that as well. And then we do, you know, if somebody wants to go to a regional school or a state school or a national, National Fire Academy, a lot of those classes are free. A lot of times, the room will be free, the class is free, if it costs overtime, then that's something we have to consider. A lot of times, people will volunteer to, to go, you know, they wanna go to this stuff, so we'll let them go, and we'll maybe pick up their food or hotel or however that works. So, we're trying to address our biggest challenge there. And then on the last page is our contact information. Our addresses. Any questions?
Yeah, with that picture in the back sure gets your attention.
Which one's that?
The same building.
Yeah.
And the only, the only comment I would make, uh, is I've been, it's been my pleasure, be, uh, the last three months, is it two or three months, three months?
Yeah.
Uh, been part of their, uh, five-year planning and, and, uh, boy, this, the hat's off to you, chief, because leadership, stuff, leadership starts at the top, and you've got leaders all over in that building, every time I sit down, I'm impressed with listening to you staff talk. Excellent work.
I thought they've been great meetings.
Absolutely.
Really encouraging to me, it's the fire chief too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
What'd you say about the fire chief? Did you just give yourself a compliment?
No, huh, no.
I thought you said, don't forget about the fire chief.
No.
We won't forget about you, bro. You guys have any other questions for chief?
No.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, enjoyed this, thank you.
Okay, uh, this brings us to the garage demolition update, Mr. Tisner?
Just had a brief update on, uh, garage, nuisance garages, and then our demolition program as well. Just kinda where we're at in the program and what we look at with the, uh, demolition program. Um, so just, uh, two sections of city code that apply, um, for demolition, um, for environmental nuisances, it's one sixty-three oh-three. Uh, talks about accessory structures and their condition, and then one sixty's abandoned unsafe buildings, and this is, uh, primarily related to uh, single-family homes or house structures. Uh, so the garage program, um, initial notices on that were sent in March of twenty-eighteen with a follow-up in July of twenty-eighteen. Uh, we sent out three hundred and four notices on that. Uh, to date, owners have complied on two hundred and sixteen of those, uh, notices, and that, uh, ranged from structural issues to paint, uh, to roof, uh, deficiencies, uh, doors, windows broken out, uh, different things with garages. Uh, so, I, we felt we had a, a very good, uh, comply, uh, rate, uh, to date on that. Uh, we've done, the city's demolished five structures. Um, of those two hundred and sixteen that were complied by themselves, a handful of those were demolished, uh, a lot of those were, uh, repaired, painted, uh, fixed up on their own. Um, we have, so we have eighty-three garages remaining on the list, um, we did a canvas this summer, um, I guess late summer with our, uh, help of our seasonal nuisance inspector and, uh, looking to send out those notices here, uh, shortly, once we get all that, uh, information together on, uh, status. Uh, just remind people, they're still on our list, uh, we're working through that. Um, currently, we have fourteen garages on our demolition list, uh, to get, uh, bids on. Uh, through our process, we found the average cost of garage demolitions, uh, around twenty-five hundred, depending on the condition of the garage, so, uh, some are a little less, some are a little more, um, but generally around twenty-five hundred dollars to demolish a garage. Um, we did get some cost initially, uh, looking at if we were to abate the nuisance through painting or, uh, repair of roof. Uh, so, due to siding and roofing was around five thousand dollars per garage to do that. Um, so, a lot, a lot more costly to actually repair the garage than to demolish it.
And one of your issues there, you have to treat, when you're going out bid, on a bid, you have to treat for lead-based paint?
Yep, yeah.
When it's the city doing it?
Yep. So, that can raise the cost and reduce the availability of contractors willing to do that as well. Currently, these are funded out of our nuisance budget, uh, we have seventy thousand dollars budgeted this, uh, fiscal year. Uh, so that, that nuisance budget covers all our nuisance issues that you see on a regular basis that come through council. Uh, the mowings, the tall grass, the trash, uh, also ash trees. Um, this is scheduled to reduce, uh, annually the next couple of years, uh, based on handling ash trees. Uh, currently, year-to-date, we've spent around thirty, our fiscal year-to-date, around thirty-two thousand dollars, so not quite half of that in, uh, four months since, uh, this fiscal year started, so, uh, we plan out our demolitions, uh, we wanna make sure we have enough funds to cover what we're actually sending out notices on. Uh, that's why we can't handle or take on, uh, more than a handful of these in a, a fiscal year. It would eat up our budget, uh, to handle trash and grass and all that other stuff. This is an example of garages that have been demolished, um, whether through the city's program or by the owner. Um, so this is the condition of garages that, uh, we're dealing with, uh, when we're at the demolition stage. Uh, generally, have, uh, failing roofs, um, structurally are unstable or unsound, and, uh, they, uh, I guess, past the point of rehab. Uh, so those are previous, uh, garages that have been, uh, demolished, uh, these are garages on our current demo list, just to show what the conditions are. Um, these generally aren't just a paint and scrape type structure, they're, uh, have some major issues with them. Uh, potentially could be rehabbed, um, by the owner, but, uh, we did have, uh, one last year, uh, that was felt was near that demolition condition, but the owner did fix it up and put a new roof on it, and it's been the, the funds to, uh, take that off our list. Um, but generally, uh, there's major structural issues, um, roofs that are in bad repair. Um, so we're, we're trying to address demolition first, uh, we don't send out a final demolition notice unless, until we, or, or, unless we know we have the funding available to take action. So, we're not sending out eighty-three notices that you have ninety days to demolish your structure, we're gonna demolish it from the city's standpoint, cause financially, we just can't do that, so we're targeting our, our, generally our top five to ten and working through that list, if someone takes care of it on their own, then we're able to add another one, uh, to that list. But we have to have the funds available to send out our certified letter saying you have X amount of time to address it, otherwise, it's just, uh, we get to that point and they don't do anything and we don't have the funds to address it, then, uh, we're, we're kinda at a standstill and we don't wanna when we send that certified letter, we want them to know that we're gonna take action if you don't do it. So, again, the painting and repairs are, uh, kinda the second priority, um, working through the demolition first. That, I think, will be something we'll look at, whether municipal infraction makes sense. Uh, with that, there's cost, uh, potential attorney fees and, uh, timing on, staff time on that, so that's not something we've gone through at this point, um, but could be something we, uh, address if, uh, I guess, we get to that point and we're not seeing action on some of those that do need, uh, paint and maybe some minor repairs. So, that's kind of a real brief overview, just, uh, wanted to give that visual as well of what type of garages we're dealing with this, at this point. We're not wanting to demolish someone's garage that just needs a coat of paint or just needs maybe some new shingles, that's not our goal. Uh, these are valuable structures for a lot of people, for storage, for lawnmowers, for vehicles, and we realize that, but if they are in a condition that they're a hazard from a structural standpoint, that's when we try and step in on that.
For context, Linda, you've had a, a specific garage that a local neighborhood group has asked about and why we haven't gotten to it, and it's one that isn't on the demo list, it's, it's, and I, I don't know if you can tell that if, as you look through these pictures in comparison to if you've looked, looked at that garage that's, uh, in question, it does need attention, but-
What I understand is it's structurally sound, so based on what Eric just told us, much as the city would like to be the big bad boogie man when it comes to getting, I saw our garages out, fiscally, we don't have a budget for that, and somebody, that garage might still be valuable to somebody from a storage standpoint, we can't just go and-
It's, it's on the list, though, to, to, to address, it's just, when we, when they've done an order prioritization, these other garages just come before it, just cause they're in worse shape, not, not that the one that, that the neighbors are complaining about
Yeah, some of these-
Doesn't need to be addressed.
Pictures here are pretty frightening, it'd be good for a haunted house.
And we do have all these tracked through our, I work our online system, so they're not going away, if we send a notice, we're gonna reevaluate next summer as well and see where we're at, and it might reprioritize some things and hopefully, a lot more are addressed, but uh, we're gonna continue to maintain this and some, some get added, some drop off, but we'll, we continue to maintain it.
Yeah, that's what I needed to hear, is that we're still gonna keep nose to the grindstone and, and keep working on these, that there is a, a priority, a hierarchy, and I do get that, seeing this picture, so.
I'll be honest with you, I'm somewhat impressed by almost a seventy percent compliance. By sending out the notice, that's, that's fantastic.
That did a ton right there.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's good, and I do have a question for you, and this is more on the demo of homes. Eric, is how, do we track when like a person passes away and we're doing the mowing and, and the weeds, or if they're incarcerated, that type of thing? What is the long-term plan there?
So, that, get to that here as we go through that, so that, that's kind of the nuisance garages, we deal that through our nuisance program. A second demolition is, uh, structures.
I jumped ahead, didn't I?
Homes here, um, and we're gonna talk a little bit more about that. Uh, just for some past history, uh, this is the budgeted amounts for our demolition program in the past, uh, few fiscal years. Uh, some of that in twenty-seven, or FY-seventeen, and earlier years was supplemented quite a bit by our home sales. Um, as you've seen through just even the sale, our process here at council, a lot of those homes that we're able to sell for rehab that were in somewhat decent condition, maybe brought three to five, eight, ten thousand dollars, are kinda fading away. We're now in the process where most of the homes we acquire, or, not, maybe not most, but, uh, fifty to percent to two-thirds of the homes we acquire are in the demolition condition, um, so we're getting, there's fewer and fewer homes that we're able to sell and supplement that demo program, so. This current fiscal year, we have thirty thousand dollars budgeted, uh, previously, uh, budgeted or planned, um, prior to FY-seventeen, FY-sixteen, we'd, some previous years to that, in the out-years of the CIP, we had forty to fifty thousand dollars budgeted, um, but those were reduced through the CIP process and budget cuts. Uh, currently, uh, as we're getting bids, typical demolition cost on a home, this being a single-family home, is seven thousand to fifteen thousand for one house. So, if we're budgeting thirty thousand annually and there's no supplement through home sales, that's, uh, two homes a year that we can address. So, basis for demolition generally, uh, is the fires, structural issues, uh, there, homes that just aren't able to be rehabbed, and that's handled through our abandoned unsafe building, uh, section. So, if the city does not own a property, the cost of demolition is assessed to the property taxes. And what we've found with this is when we demo home and we don't own it, that just becomes a nuisance that now we're mowing and assessing more funds to the taxes, and it, uh, the demolition generally by itself, it just precludes someone from picking that up at tax sale. Um, so, our goal is to try and at least acquire these and, and then demo them and get them in the hands of neighbors where they're not something we're dealing with on a nuisance standpoint for the next five to ten years. So, six fifty-seven A, um, we have six, uh, planned in the next, uh, six to twelve months, I guess, um, potentially sooner. If those six were to be demolished, that'd be about seventy-four thousand. Uh, currently, we have four homes, um, that we've gotten bids on, uh, that are estimated around forty-three thousand five hundred. Um, and we have one issue, we have a demo bid out on, uh, we're going through the court system, there's a structural issue on a house on North Eighth. there's a structural issue on a house on North Eighth, that we want to demo, but there's kind of a process, due process there, that we're working through the court system on, and that bid is seventeen thousand five hundred. I think we currently have fifty-six hundred in our demo program, but this is a, kind of a safety issue for the neighborhood, that it's going to have to come down one way or another, because it, it's just not a safe home, and we'd like to do it sooner, but we're going through.
If you drive on North Eighth Street, just south of the gas station there, I think it's a block immediately south, maybe it's two blocks immediately south, you can see the hole in the, in the, the back half of the building.
So six fifty-seven A, looking at abandoned properties, we evaluate that every year. We could have five to ten a year for the next ten years, just based on kind of our past practice and our, our trending there, so that could be fifty to a hundred homes in the next ten years that, hopefully, we're able to rehab some of those, but a lot of those could be demolished. It's not, we're not going to acquire all those if we don't have the ability to do anything with them, but that's kind of where we're at as a community. A lot of those are properties where the owner passes away, the family does not want to deal with it, as it's in such poor condition, the family doesn't want to deal with it as his estate, and just walks away, they don't take ownership of it, and they're just sitting out there and we have to acquire them. So talking to our inspector this morning, probably around fifty percent or so are properties where someone's passed away and either don't have family, or don't have family that willing to take the property on as a liability. We do have some where people just blatantly walk away and don't know where they're at, but a lot of them are through a death.
So the process, the, when you do, the ideal way, way to go through it is through the six fifty-seven A, so we have control. Now, there is a limitation on how much we can really process that way and still get other work done, but that isn't the limitation we're coming up with, it's more the funds to deal with the properties. And as you mentioned, and you're, suppose you're going to talk about the Klein Center, but that's one that we've identified as, it's, it's going to be, at some point, someone's going to have to deal with it. And we ultimately are probably the one of, the, the person of, or the entity of last resort to, to address that.
What's this, not to get off on a tangent, what's the specifics on that particular building?
The Klein Center?
Yeah.
The owner's essentially walked away, they haven't paid taxes, there's thousands of dollars in assessments on it. We've done, through our brownfield assessment, we're able to do a phase one and phase two, I think they just did the phase two to at least get that background information on it. Every time we mow it, it's four to five hundred dollars, and we've continued to board it up. The previous owner or someone else has taken out most of the copper and plumbing and electric, so it's basically a shell building that needs everything put back, that if it were rehabbed at, prior to all that going away, that probably would have saved a couple million dollars on the rehab cost, but now, I don't know if it's rehabbable based on that condition.
And is there any recourse that we have on the owner?
Not, not that, not any real recourse, he's in, out of state at this point, and it's just a, I guess, a building sitting there.
I mean, you can, we can pursue, if we do the demo and, and you have a cost, we have, we can take whatever avenues are available and try to, try to capture funds, but to, for reimbursement of that, but that's, there is, there's no gimmies on that, and it isn't, as you mentioned, an out-of-state owner, it makes it a little bit more difficult.
We've done small claims a couple times, gotten five or six thousand dollars on a couple past.
And this is not a small claims eligible.
This is a project, this will be a...
Half million dollar plus project.
Yeah, half million dollar expense.
So yeah, this, looking at like the PD, former PD building, I talked about Apollo at one time, I know Dial has been brought up at one time, the, this building, those are all half million to million dollar demolitions. But just for that background on current city ownership, that current issue with the demo bid, and then potential six fifty-seven As, those are eleven properties, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in demolition cost. We're budgeting thirty thousand annually, so that, I mean, this is just something to put and make sure you're aware of, and these are eyesores in neighborhoods and things that have to be addressed one way or another, but not that it should all fall on the city, but this is kind of where we're at, just for you guys to have a background on what it costs and what we're looking at, and what our inventory of properties are.
Do we, as a city, have an ordinance on abandoned buildings?
We do not have an ordinance, as, has been discussed whether that's something that wanted to be...
Because I know some cities do, it seems like we have a lot of them, it might be something we want to consider for the future.
A lot of those look at commercial buildings, and it's an annual inspection, like, is the roof in good condition, is the property secure, is there a contact for property maintenance? Not generally for single-family homes, which, as you see, that, that's a big undertaking just in itself. But this is an example of some of the homes, just conditions that were, single-family homes that are on our list. A lot of those do have structural foundation issues, which generally just puts them out of the rehab right away.
You guys good?
Yep.
You good?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, sir. Number five is leaf pickup program, Don Fitting. Thought we dealt with this, let's just do it, coming back. Did you leave something out last time, Don?
He's done, something's been, been a bunch of fishes.
Okay.
Two fishes. I'm not done with it.
I have her pass the, but I...
I'll pass it. Yeah, it's just, it's two bird, one stab.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Well, you can, okay. I mean, somebody else does.
Yeah, but...
Okay, I'm going to go through this very quickly. There's, you have a two-sided presentation, I'm just going to basically read what's on, I'm going to say next slide, keep you awake, have at least one person paying attention. Okay, so, that's not the first one. There it is. So we're talking about the City of Burlington's leaf program. Pre nineteen ninety-eight, residents would rake leaves to the curb, and the city's street department personnel collected leaves from the street using loaders, dump trucks, and street sweepers, and they may have possibly been using a vac truck as well. Next slide. The city council deemed the program at that time that was being used by city crews to pick up the leaves to be untimely, inefficient, and generally unsatisfactory. Next slide. City staff prepared and presented to the city council a report outlining various methods and use in other communities, including the leaf vacuum trucks, leaf sweepers, mulchers, which are units that were one traffic lane wide, and they were towed behind a mulch truck, and then also, communities were using bagged leaves collection. Next slide. So out of that study, the staff proposed to the city council the collection of leaves placed in yard waste bags to take place the same day as trash collection. Next slide. So in September of ninety-eight, there was a resolution, and it was adopted, and leaves set out for collection will be collected on the first workday after the day on which a resident's trash is to be picked up. The day after was intended to allow residents to use for their leaves their normal trash cans emptied the previous day. Next slide. In November of twenty eighteen, approximately twenty years later, city-owned wheeled trash carts were put in use last November for collection of garbage. City-owned wheeled trash carts and thirty-three gallon garbage cans were allowed to be used in the twenty eighteen fall and the twenty nineteen spring leaf collection program. Next slide. The superintendent, moi, deemed allowing the use of thirty-three gallon garbage cans and the city-owned wheeled trash carts to be a mistake, because they were, that caused untimely issues, as well as it was inefficient. Next slide. I asked the council to consider a resolution, and it was adopted in May of this calendar year, indicating that garbage cans and city-owned wheeled trash carts will no longer be acceptable containers for the collection of leaves and other types of yard waste that are set out for collection by city crews. Next slide. Leaves now set out for collection must only be in acceptable yard waste paper bags, they're limited to forty pounds per bag, and they are not to have any tape or staples on those bags. Next slide. So what's the problem? The problem with collecting leaves from a can, I feel, is it's a less efficient way of collecting leaves. Next slide. Estimated to take three times, four times longer than it takes to collect leaves that are set out in a paper yard waste bag. The can must be carried to the truck, emptied, returned to the set-out location, placing it so it stays put, whether that be on its side because of the wind or the slope of the ground, or standing upright, and if there is a lid, it takes even more time to deal with that container of leaves. People do call the office to complain if a can and/or their lid is found in the street, damaged or not, and some of our customers expect restitution if in fact the lid or the can is damaged or is lost. Next slide. With a paper yard waste bag, the time spent for that near same volume of leaves is the employee, he picks up the bag, carries it to the truck, and tosses it in, and it's done. Next slide. Freezing weather, leaves frozen in a can are much more difficult to collect than leaves frozen in a paper yard waste bag. Next slide. Leaves oftentimes will only partially come out when dumped, and sometimes not at all without some aggressive encouragement. Employees have experienced muscle strain injury by raising the can to above waist, shaking the can at the sill level of the hopper in an effort to dislodge the stuck material. They've tried banging the can on the sill of the hopper, and in doing that, cans can crack, handles break off, some of the plastic cans, and metal cans dent. Next slide. With a paper yard waste bag, the employee, again, picks up the bag, frozen leaves and all, carries it to the truck, tosses it in, he's done. Next slide. I would like to note, if the bag is frozen to the ground and the bag rips, the employee is not responsible for picking up the leaves. If, realize that the bags are frozen to the ground, the bags are left, and we did have those circumstances last fall. The employee is not responsible for picking up the leaves if the bag simply rips open in any kind of weather, spilling leaves to the ground. So that's a, that's a weakness pertaining to bags, people are concerned about the quality of the bag and whether it will hold up. Next slide. Problem with allowing the use of the city-owned wheeled trash carts, they're less efficient, and they're also untimely. Next slide. In regards to being less efficient, it's estimated to take three or four times longer than to collect leaves in a paper yard waste bag. The cart must be wheeled to the truck, needs to be positioned to engage the hydraulic tipper, actuate the tipper, and wait for the tipper to cycle, lifting and emptying the cart, then setting it back down on the street, then return the emptied cart to the set-out location, placing it so that it stays put. Next slide. Again, less efficient, people pack leaves in trash cart more so than in a yard waste bag, and some people do do that, doo-doo. When material is packed into the thirty-five gallon carts, it does not easily fall out. Sometimes takes numerous tippings, shaking of the cart on the tipper, sometimes the cart falls off the tipper into the hopper to get all the garbage or leaves. Garbage is a problem with the thirty-fives as well, because people cram it in there to get their lid fully closed, and you put it on that tipper and you've got to shake the heck out of that cart in an effort to try to get the material, material out. And the cart, thirty-five gallon in particular, will fall off the tipper into the hopper, so now the man's got to pick up the cart and pick it up out of the hopper and put it back to where he got it. Next slide. With a paper yard waste bag, the employee picks the bag up, carries it to the truck, tosses it in, done. Next slide. Note, I will acknowledge that sixty-five gallon carts and the ninety-five gallon carts would be the equivalent of two or three paper yard waste bags respectively, and thus the total time would, for dumping the larger wheeled cart, would be closer to collecting of two or three paper yard waste bags, and of course, there would be less wear and tear on the employee. But I also want to note that carts are commonly paired with fully automated trucks in yard waste programs. Next slide. Collection of set-out garbage is the number one priority for the solid waste department. Collections of leaves set out is a secondary priority. Next slide. So there, again, still have, they're less efficient, the carts, leaf collection truck must stop and check every city-owned wheeled trash cart it comes across on the leaf route at the curb to see whether or not it has leaves to be collected or not. Some residents who are on a curbside route for garbage, in violation of city code one oh six point one point three, leave their wheeled trash cart at the curb twenty-four seven, or at least are slow to retrieve their cart from the curb. Empty carts are to be removed from the curb the evening of their collection day, according to the city code. We don't have any cart police going out cruising the streets to see whether there's a cart that's at the curb when it's not supposed to be. If a cart is out and they're doing leaves, if you're going to allow carts in the program, they'll have to stop that truck and check that cart to see if there's anything in it. Next slide. Untimely, what do I mean by untimely? A city-owned wheeled trash cart filled with leaves is unavailable for use by the residents for their trash. So if it's not emptied on the first workday after the collection day for garbage, and it does happen, and did happen to us last fall, due to various reasons, it can be personnel, it can be equipment problems, it, in last fall's case, it was primarily the combination of weather and personnel. And so then that cart did not get emptied the next day after the garbage day, and so that cart sat there full of leaves. And that time of being full of leaves after the, the garbage collection may exceed the normal leaf collection day by one, up to three or more calendar days, because there'd be weekends involved there. So the cart sits there full of leaves, and as long as the cart has leaves in it, the person can't put their trash in it. And we have received calls in the past saying, they haven't got the leaves out of my cart, I have no place to put my trash, what am I supposed to do with it? Next slide. We have found most city-owned wheeled trash carts are not kept clean, as they're supposed to be. Some are quite odorous, and they're wet inside, and they're putting the leaves in there, and we're dumping them, of course, into the truck. Note, typically, yard waste programs have a dedicated wheeled cart for yard waste and leaves only, and they're usually a different color than that used for garbage, so you don't have that confusion at the curb. Next slide. So what are the alternatives available to today's leaf collection program? People can mulch leaves with their mower, leaving the mulch leaves on their yard, that's what I do. People can compost their leaves as, after catching with the mower or raking them up. They can haul the leaves to the landfill where the leaves are composted. It's a free disposal of leaves and grass, and if they want to, they can get free compost at the same time when they leave. They can burn in accordance with the rules. Next slide. For convenience of using a wheeled cart, and I know there are people out there that feel that the wheeled cart is much more convenient, if they wish to use this wheeled cart, they could subscribe to the yard waste program that's offered by the private sector. For example, Levine Sanitation... For example, Levine Sanitation has a yard waste program. The monthly rental fee for the ninety-five gallon wheeled cart is currently two dollars a month. They provide service on Wednesdays in the city of Burlington, and their current rates are, if they dump your cart, they will bill you for four dollars and fifty cents for that dumping. Now, they'll also, as long as you have one of their carts, they'll also empty a thirty-three gallon can, but they'll charge you a dollar fifty to dump that can. You can also have a, one of the program-approved yard waste bags out there, but they'll charge you a dollar fifty to pick up that bag and throw it into their truck. Their program is seasonal, starts April first, and again, this is a yard waste program, so it's intended to handle the lawn litter that you clean up your yard in the spring. It's intended to allow you to put grass in there, maybe garden waste throughout the summer, and then ultimately, in the fall, you put leaves in there. It starts on April first, but their last week is the week before Thanksgiving. Next slide. The reason that was given to me for ending the program before Thanksgiving, I commented, that seems kind of early because leaves are still on trees and still falling. That's really our heavy time, is around Thanksgiving and a little bit after. The reason that was given, there are problems with leaves freezing in the yard waste carts, and these are ninety-five gallon carts. Same manufacturer, same cart that we have in our program. So, spend ti, and to spend time using a pole or rod, some type of tool, to loosen or dislodge the leaves that are stuck inside the cart, and this would be the driver doing this on this fully automated truck that they use, having to get out and try to get that, those leaves loosened up. It's inefficient, it's not cost-effective, so they shut their program down. Note that the city of Burlington's program, we have the same ninety-fives they do, different color, but we have the same ninety-fives. But we also have sixty-fives, and we also have thirty-fives. So, if freezing is a problem for ninety-fives, it can be expected to be more so with sixty-five and thirty-five gallon wheeled carts. Note, the city's program continues through the first full week of December. They end their program the first full week, or the last full week prior to Thanksgiving, week of Thanksgiving, and we go through the first full week of December. When our program ends, certainly the weather has as much of potential to be cold or freezing at that time. So, I also gave out to you, maybe you could put that last table on there, I don't know if it's going to be readable or not. I had my office coordinator cont, or actually, I did not have her contact the cities. What she did is she went to the websites for the various cities. I am not a big proponent for saying, "What's other people doing? We should copy what they're doing." But I figured that you may be interested to know what is happening out there. Certainly, this is just a, just a handful of communities. We have Davenport, Muscatine, West Burlington, Fort Madison, Keokuk, Atomoa, Cedar Rapids, and Dubuque, the gem of Iowa, Dubuque. None of these programs, from the data that she got off the website, I believe, I don't believe any of them allow the use of garbage cans. Some of them have their own yard waste programs with wheeled carts that they operate throughout the year, and they allow those carts to be used for leaves. They also, when they get into the leaf program, allow the use of yard waste bags. Some of them have vacuum trucks to pick up leaves, and they may run a vacuum truck out to pick up leaves for two weeks, and they give that schedule out to their community. There are also a number of cities listed on the list, as you can see, Fort Madison, Keokuk, Atomoa, yard waste bags only. One of the communities, I think, sells their own yard waste bag, and you have to use their bag. I don't know what the cost of the bags are for that community. Atomoa has a one-dollar yard waste tag that is attached to the bag for collection throughout the year. It does not indicate they dropped the requirement for that one-dollar tag during the leaf season. Some programs do do that. They have a charge for collection of yard waste throughout the year, but when they get to the leaf program or the period of leaf, of the leaf collection, they'll actually discontinue charging for the service to, in recognition of that they're dealing with I'm not going to go through all of it, but it's there for you to look at. So, you asked for us to come back, for me to come back to revisit this. It's been six months now.
When did we ask for you to come back?
I got that information through the city manager, that I was asked to come back to talk about the leaf collection program. It wanted to be revisited. So, I basically shared with you the points that were discussed at the work session, and when the resolution was adopted last May, and so that's what was in my presentation, and in this list of what other cities are doing is somewhat new, at least the table the way it's laid out is.
It's sort of interesting that the towns that do offer the use of a container are charging a separate fee, an additional fee for doing that.
Right.
Yeah, I, again, I said this before, I get it. I mean, for some people, it'd be so much easier and they already have the cans, but I also get the fact that people are oblivious, well, whatever word you want to use, to staff. And my biggest reason for moving to the bags is because of staff. You know, you can check, the city's hiring people all the time, but you know what? Whenever we're hiring for refuse drivers, that's usually probably the minimum amount of applications that we get. It's just hard to keep people in that position, and it's a brutal job, just doing the trash. And I, you know, and nobody thinks about how important the trash guys are unless the trash gets left, or a can is dented. But to me, I, in a perfect world, man, I'd love to have trash cans for everything and just set it out and it'll disappear, but it doesn't work that way. We have to have manpower to do it. And to me, I'm satisfied with the bags, and it's not, you know, it may not be perfect for some, but I would say this publicly, I've said this to several other people, there was somebody that was complaining about it, and I know where this person lives, and if I lived there, I, you know, I would try to spread the wealth and give somebody an opportunity to, you know, a kid in the yard or in the neighborhood to make some money, you know, give somebody a chance to earn a hustle and become a man, but I'm okay with the bags. I don't know what.
Yeah, I mean, you know, for me, I guess, I don't want to backtrack. We've made our decision. I've never had a problem, I've had a couple of homes now that had big trees, and all I've ever used was yard bags. So, to me, it's not, it's not that big a deal, but that's my personal situation. The bags are not that costly, they're lighter to lift and move if they're putting them out to the curb. I'm not interested in revising our decision. That's just me.
I thought your presentation was very informative. I did not quite understand the deal with the frozen leaves. So, if someone had a lidded can, I think I know the answer, a lidded can, and the reason they would get frozen is the leaves were wet when they put in there to begin with, and then the temperature dropped? Is that what gives us frozen leaves stuck to the can?
Wet leaves going into the can, certainly.
Not everybody has lids.
Even with the lid, at least this is what I've been told, I've not paid any attention, but when the weather changes, the leaves may seem dry when you put them in there, but when you cover them up and the temperature changes, like on your vehicle, condensation occurs. These cans are not airtight, and so what I'm being told is, in cases where they have wheeled carts and the lids are closed, they believe that the leaves will actually have condensation form on them, and they'll freeze in there. Now, the people I talked to use the one-armed bandit to pick up the cart and empty it. If you've ever seen the one-armed bandits, it's got kind of a, two arms that have rubber liners on them, and they come out, and it grabs the can, and it has to somewhat collapse the can in order to lift it and tip it. Perhaps the constriction of the can, making it narrower makes it harder for stuff that's down below to come out, especially if it's frosted or frozen or whatever. Certainly, sixty-fives and thirty-fives pose as much, if not more, of a potential for that type of thing to have happen. Our semi-automated trucks have tippers where they grab the bar in the front, and they don't collapse the can. So, maybe they'll have a greater chance of coming out from a can being handled by the semi-automated method. I was surprised when I was told that frozen leaves are a problem, especially when we're talking about a ninety-five gallon cart. But the cart does pose a problem using the same cart in that if you're using it for both garbage and for leaves, we do have issues with equipment, with personnel, with the weather, where we're not able to empty those leaf carts the following day as what we typically do, or historically have done. And the cart does take more time to empty than just picking a bag up and tossing it, and that doesn't take into account the telephone calls that come from people who are unhappy with us on how we handle their cans, the lids, or their carts, and the time that takes up of office personnel time.
That I can see, I could see it would be problematic if a can was not picked up, and they'd have to run and check to see if there were leaves in it. I do see the problem with that. I do think the communities that have the separate colored cans that they set out for yard debris does have some merit, but I don't think we're in a position to consider something like that.
I wouldn't do it for a leaf program only, and to be honest with you, not really interested in delving into the yard waste program as some communities do. I think that we have local private companies that provide that service. In the past, twenty years ago, and further back, I believe it was in ninety-one that the state and/or the federal government legislated no yard waste being put in with garbage going into the working face of the landfill. So, the solid waste department used to pick up bags of leaves. They used to pick up bags of grass. They did pick up sticks and put them in the truck with the garbage, but that stopped, I believe it was in ninety-one. And when that happened, the city of Burlington did not pick up the baton and provide an option for the citizens of Burlington to deal with their grass, with the branches. They, I don't know when the program, I assume that we were scooping the streets with loaders and uni-loaders and cleaning them with dump trucks and such, but generally, the city just dropped the ball and didn't do anything for a couple, two, three years, and the private sector, I think that's when they actually started their yard waste program. And it's evolved to the point where it is now, where they have the carts and they have the once-a-week service, and I think the program that they have is a good program. I don't honestly know how many contractors are providing this service. I had Levine's up, that was the one company that I contacted. I saw no need to contact other companies, but I think they provide an excellent service. And for those people who wish the convenience of using a cart for their leaves, should consider a subscription to their program. But it does come to an end the last full week prior to Thanksgiving. What they do with it after that, they can mulch, they can burn, they can compost, they can self-haul, or they could break down and buy some bags and put them at the curb under our program. And I saw an ad in one of the local retailers this weekend where I think the five, package of five yard waste bags was a dollar seventy-nine, I believe, on sale. And when we implemented this program back in ninety-eight, if I remember the pricing and from my notes, from my files, bags were priced between a dollar eighty-five all the way up to two dollars and fifty cents, depending on where you bought that package of five. Here we are twenty years later, and they're virtually the same price as what they were then. Quality of paper bags, I don't know. I've heard people say we've had troubles with the bags, they tear. My experience has been the bags hold up very, very well. If you put them in a puddle and let them sit there in a puddle, you're going to have problems.
If you're trying to shove in big branches and whatnot, you know, jagged edges, you know, but yeah, I think they are quality bags. I haven't really had a problem with them unless I've tried to abuse and stuffed too much.
So, where are we at then? Do we need to discuss this further, or is everybody worse?
I don't.
I think it should be, we should be done discussing this.
I agree.
Peanut butter? Counselor?
I don't have any problem based on what we've done tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Don. I mean, Don.
Appreciate it.
Don, you're done.
Mr. T, everybody's good with the appointments? I've got one tomorrow, so I don't know if there's a problem with that. Mr. Tinsley?
We've got trash, just a reminder, tomorrow's the Fall Trash Off down at the parking lot south of the auditorium from ten to six. Do require photo ID or water bill, proof of residency for city Burlington residents. Not accepting appliances, batteries, TV, demo material, electronics, TV, computers, but anything else you can dump there, it is self-haul. You have to unload and put in the large trash containers you have to put in from your vehicle yourself, so, but we'll be out there.
Do those items have to be in bags?
No.
Okay. Got some things to throw away.
One day only. Get some peanut butter.
This Saturday is coming up a unique event in downtown Burlington, the Holiday Spice Event, nine to two, and what you can expect to find there is antiques and crafted goods and baked goods and think cookies and pies and cakes, yum, I'm there. So, nine to two this weekend, Holiday Spice Event, downtown Burlington.
Counselor?
Well, tomorrow, the Cure, Cure the Violence Group is meeting at the Community Room A in the library at six, if anybody wants to attend, and they're also holding a free Halloween dance party at the Homestead, eighteen thirty-nine, which is on Broadway, and that's seven to ten for kindergarteners through eighth grade.
What's that room number, John?
A. It's Community Room A for the library for tomorrow. And I have one last thing, November seventh is the next community forum that the city's hosting.
Oh, early voting is open.
Get out and vote.
Thank you.
Vote early enough in Chicago.
I'm not going to, I'm going to touch that. FPT.
I have nothing, thank you.
I want to remind everybody that Halloween is coming up Thursday, so we're going to have trick-or-treaters out running around. Just be safe with driving. I know, depending on the neighborhood you go into, can be anywhere from one to hundreds of kids frantically trying to get the best haul that they can. Also, I just got an alert on my phone that on Wednesday morning, we're expected one to three inches of snow, and Wednesday evening, we're expected another one to three inches. So, in the event that we have snow, please keep in mind that city workers will be out and working on their material. Outside of that, that's it.
And don't steal councilmen's candy bowl this year. Was it last year that somebody stole your bowl?
Oh, yeah, last year, somebody took, we took, we put out candy.
His daughter wasn't happy about it.
And they took all the candy, which at the end of the day, you do it, and I would have expected the candy to go, but they took my wife's nice bowl.
Your wife's favorite bowl.
And if some, so if anybody's got an extra bowl that their kid came home with last year floating around the house, if you could drop it back off, you know, bring it to City Hall, my wife would greatly appreciate it.
That's right. You don't even have to leave your name, just drop it off on the second floor.
No questions asked.
We'll handle Steve's.
Jimmy.
Two things, since you're talking about Halloween, we have the Safe Trick-or-Treat down at the auditorium Thursday night, six PM. It's always a popular event. We have usually somewhere between twelve hundred to fifteen hundred kids, adults, people come through, so that's a big event for us. Also, I want to let you know that we've opened our twenty-four-seven drop-off for medication, unused medication down at the police department. It's the old Knight Bank Deposit, it was in the paper Sunday. I just wanted to add an additional note to encourage- I just wanted to add an additional note to encourage people to put that in some type of bag and don't dump the pills into the Knight Deposit, because the pills will still stay there and be accessible to other people. So the idea here is to make them unaccessible to others, so put them in some type of container and stick them into that Knight Deposit. Just make sure you push it hard, because the way that that bank deposit is set up, it would push the bags out down into the deposit, and that's what the last little push is for. If you're having trouble with it, call us, we'll come out and take them and put them in there. So that's it.
Thanks, Chief.
Yeah, the community violence forum that you mentioned, at the loft, November seven at six o'clock, and those are two very separate groups that are coming at this from, and I was just talking with chief about this earlier, they're very passionate and trying to come up with ways to solve a significant city issue, but they're coming at it from very different ways. And hopefully, as this moves forward, if something does come out of it, that there's going to be some ability to get some unity between those efforts to make sure they're on the same page. So do encourage y'all to be involved in both of those to the extent you can, and if there is going to be something that comes out of them, try to get everybody onto the same page. That's all I had.
Okay. It's good to see you, my friend. I appreciate.